All in order, the the council meeting, this is a special meeting. Starting at six thirty Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty three. Can we have a roll call?
Council member Casissa.
Here.
Council member of OZIO.
Here.
Thank you. Council member Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. Okay, can we stand and salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Was it? Asking if you'd like to sit closer.
Oh.
No need to be Rosa.
Okay, so.
No woman is an island.
That's right.
We'll move on to item number two. This is open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor presiding officer. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda time when it's called. And once the public comment portion of any item on this agenda has been closed by the council, no further comment will be accepted. Do we have any comments in the room or online?
Um, for open time, it looks like we do not have any hands raised. And then it doesn't look like any of the attendees are here for open time. And let me just look at. We don't have any emailed public comments either.
Okay. Seeing none in the room, I'll close item number three, move on to number three. This is the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff and public may request removal of an item or rescheduling of the item will be at the discretion of the mayor, town council. So is any council wanting to pull any staff issues? Okay, so I'll look for a motion to move three A.
Oh, go ahead, move three A.
Second. Call for a vote.
Council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member of OZIO.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Okay. Closing number three, moving on to number four. These are the public hearings, item four A. This is a public hearing for the consideration and possible action to number one, adopt resolution number two of twenty twenty three, certifying the final subsequent environmental impact report prepared by the town of Corder Madera's sixth cycle housing element update project and making findings, including adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section fifteen oh ninety and fifteen oh nine one. And number two, adopt resolution number three, twenty twenty three, adopting a general plan land use element amendment to create a new mixed use housing element land use designation. And number three, introduce an ordinance to rezone eighteen parcels associated with the update to the town of Corder Madera's housing element six cycle and to adopt amendments to the title eighteen of the Corder Madera municipal code to amend chapter eighteen dot zero four and to add a new Corder Madera municipal code to amend chapter eighteen dot zero eight housing element and to add a new housing element overlay district to chapter eighteen point eighteen, special purpose overlay districts of the CMMC. Um, so do we have a staff report for this?
We do, we do. Thank you and good evening, Mayor Lee. Uh, and council members. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Regarding what I I think I regard as very significant milestone in the town's housing element update process, which I hope as everybody should be well aware of by now is a state required process that we must complete every eight years. So we've started working on this really in late summer of twenty twenty one. And here we are tonight, I think through the hard work of staff, I think it's important to recognize a particular, in particular Martha Battaglia, senior planner. Um, our consultant team, many of who we we have online and also here in the audience, Christine O'Rourke. And our planning commission as well, our town council uh, and many, many, many community members as well who have spent their time with us, staff and provided input and feedback that has helped to develop this proposal. And the housing element, um, just so it's clear, I'm going to describe what we're doing this evening and thank you, Mayor Lee, for reading those various actions, those lengthy actions. I'll describe it as sort of the first phase of what we need to, we are recommending that the town council do in order to achieve a compliant housing element, and I'll get to what phase two is in a little bit. I do think tonight it's worthwhile, especially given a lot of the recent public comment we've received on this rezoning proposals to do a thorough presentation tonight. Um, I'm going to be providing background and context for the actions that we are recommending the town council take tonight. Stuart Polter, who is a senior planner with EMC who has helped us prepare the subsequent uh, final subsequent environmental impact report for the housing element update. Uh, he's going to be joining us via Zoom. Uh, and we'll be giving a sort of a, an overview of the SEQA document for you, for you all. Um, and then Martha will be going through the specifics of the proposed general plan amendment and the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. So next slide, just you'll see. Oh, so we have, so we got to open up the slide presentation, I think. Sorry about that. There we go. Thanks. Uh, and you can go to the next slide. So I'll start with the end first, just so we're clear what staff is, is requesting and that the, the town council consider. And that staff is recommending three actions tonight. Uh, the first being adopting a resolution that certifies the environmental document associated and analyzes the environmental, potential environmental impacts associated with the housing element update project. We have a resolution as well uh, to amend the general plan, which is really about making sure that the general plan is consistent with the rezoning actions, which is number three here. That is really the, the meat of what we're discussing tonight as well, um, which is the an ordinance to rezone eighteen parcels, which is central to the strategy the town has has developed in order to meet the, the arena numbers that we've talked about in the past, uh, that the state has provided us with. Um, and so that's, uh, as you mentioned, the amendments to title eighteen of the Corder Madera municipal code, uh, mending chapters eighteen oh four and adding a new overlay, um, chapter eighteen eighteen. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So actually, we can go to the, that slide's great. So I wanted to provide a little bit of context as why we're here this evening at a special meeting as well. And that's really relates to the timeline associated with state mandated requirements and, and how we have to do certain actions or else there are certain consequences. So the primary reason for bringing this item to you tonight, um, at a special meeting is because we have a deadline of January thirty first. In order to complete the rezonings of the properties we've identified to meet our arena, the regional housing needs allocation. That is, if we want to avoid what is called the buy right consequence. Meaning if we rezoned these properties after January thirty first, the town would have to approve any residential projects on these sites ministerially, um, basically an application over the counter to staff without our design review process, without environmental review process that our community um, and the town has become accustomed and our planning commission and others have become accustomed to participating in for, for really decades. So that's uh, I think also importantly, um, if we didn't get the rezonings done by January thirty first, we could not require any of the sites to have commercial uses as part of a new residential project. You'd have to allow it to be a hundred percent residential project, which for example, is part of the rezoning requirements we currently have in the proposal before you for site two at Paradise Shopping Center. And we'll talk about that shortly. And at the village, which of course their commercial uses are very much appropriate and important for the tax base of the town moving forward. So we are pushing to really retain as much of the town's discretion related to project reviews as we can under state laws. The idea is to introduce the ordinance this evening and adopt the ordinance at the regular January seventeenth meeting of the town council, which is when ordinances are required by law to be adopted, you can't adopt it at a special meeting. So that's why we're doing this. We also of, of course, uh, canceled the January third meeting due to the proximity to the holidays of the regular town council meeting at that time. And so looking to the slide, we circled where we are in the process. This is what I referred to as phase one tonight. And phase two actually consists of the adoption of the housing element itself. Um, and I didn't bring the document with me, but it's the actual, not only the rezonings, but it's the series of policies and programs the town is committing to moving forward with over the next eight years related to housing policy. And as well, we will be bringing the safety element update at that time as well. And that will happen later this spring. So if you recall, the town council authorized staff to send the draft housing element to the state in, um, in August to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, we did receive comments back from HCD on November, I think it was twenty third, twenty first. Okay, it was the week of Thanksgiving. And so after really this portion, phase one, we were get, we, after we deal with phase one and these rezonings and the SEQA actions, we will, staff will be turning our focus over to submitting a revised housing element responding to the comments from HCD. They have been sixty days to review um, our response and our revised housing element, and then we hope to be back to you, uh, the town council and the planning commission before that. Uh, at that point, along with the update to the town's safety element, which is also required by state law for adoption. And then theoretically, this process is over for at least this year and maybe until, so you know, another eight years from now. Uh, next slide. So, so I did think it would be important to talk a little bit as well, just to provide the context of the, the public outreach that we have done through this process. You know, I think a lot of credit again goes to our team who devised a strategy to do a public outreach, um, starting from day one. Martha planned a place or consultant team. You know, this has really been central to the entire process. Um, I, I think we've tried to really step the bar up um, and elevate public outreach to a new level in the town and Corder Madera and our planning processes. We've heard from others actually in prior, uh, comment letters and prior IJ articles and whatnot, that, um, we've been effective with our public outreach, uh, that, that really this isn't a, a model for outreach for towns of our size. Um, and I think I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that, recognize that. And so the focus of much of our outreach really has been on specifically housing opportunity sites and the need to rezone these sites at different densities. What those densities should be in order to meet, you know, what is the scale and proper size of housing sites as well? And that's something we've continually talked about through the development of this housing element update plan. So part of what we're just showing on this slide is, uh, the various different outreach efforts beginning of September twenty one, we had six part workshop series, um, nine interactive pop-up events. Um, you could see where we were at all those different, uh, times. Um, next slide. This was the original mailer that we sent out, uh, advertising the, um, original six-part workshop series, which a significant portion of that, at least three of the meetings were devoted to really developing the strategy and identifying the housing opportunity sites that we would use to, to meet the, the state required Rena. And why we were doing so and, and how it the rationale behind that. I'm not going to go into all of that tonight, but I just wanted to reiterate that we have, uh, documented that we, all of these workshops and the presentations were also translated in Spanish. We had, uh, this mailer went out to every resident and every business, uh, every property owner, um, both commercial, um, residential and whatnot in town. Used every resource we had available to do so. Next slide. This as well is what we did in, um, July, when we released the draft housing element. This was another mailer that direct mailer that went out to every resident in town. The pop-up events, next slide, just show, you know, the, we had a really great. This was actually probably the most enjoyable part of the, the work, to be honest, was being out and with our community members and talking and getting into discussions and conversations about housing policy and, and, and you know, the needs of the town and providing some, uh, resources and, and giving a little, going into a little bit more depth and just having discussions and conversations with our community members about housing in Corder Madera. So and next slide. So in all, we really you know, we don't, we, our, our website was a great resource, I think, for people to use. We had uh, three thousand unique visitors, uh, to our website. Differentiate that obviously from just hits. That's just actual different IP addresses. Um, the six-part workshop series drew at, at least a hundred seventy five. Um, there are more attendees, but some attended more. I think one of our council members actually attended all of them. So, uh, I see council member of OZIO raising her hand. So thank you for that. And, um, the pop-up events again were very successful at July fourth. Town center at the farmer's market over at, um, the Nugget Market as well. We had a couple of events there. And we had feedback form. So really, I think uh, our, our engagement speaks in the thousands here, really. So. Next slide. So one of the other things I'll just provide quickly in terms of some of the context for the town council, since the town council last saw this switching gears a little bit. You know, we were last before the town council with this project in August of twenty twenty two, uh, requesting authorization to send the draft to, um, uh, the state for their review, and that was predicated on the timeline I mentioned earlier. But there, since that time, we actually have, uh, made a couple of changes that I just wanted to to the housing opportunity sites that I wanted to make sure you're aware of. And that are now reflected in the rezoning proposal before you tonight. So, so next slide. Excuse me. This is actually where we were in August. Uh, the map that you're familiar with in terms of the nine, uh, sorry, at this time it was eleven sites. Yellow indicating sort of those with the least amount of rezoning in terms of increasing density. Those were the lowest density sites. Uh, one, five and nine that were more integrated into the, or adjacent to residential neighborhoods. The orange being the, the mid, medium sort of density sites, um, which are a lot of them clustered frankly, right around this building. Um, and we added a couple in, in, in June of twenty twenty two, when we have a, a comment letter from a property owner. And then the highest density site at the village, the Macy's property, um, as well, which is site six. Those were developed, and I'm not going to go, next slide, those were developed, uh, really primarily using this, the criteria for, uh, the, the planning framework and the criteria of, of, and the strategy behind. Uh, you know, trying to look at areas that were uh, commercial properties that um, ultimately uh, could be, uh, uh, were not sort of in established residential neighborhoods, deep into neighborhoods where you could actually, uh, have less traffic, therefore traveling deep into the neighborhoods on the east and the west sides, closer to the freeway and highway connections. Closer to the best available public transit. Um, and certainly there are several sites that were, um, either vacant today or in could use of some investment moving forward that were looked at as well and could be win-wins in terms of providing both mixed use opportunities and reinvestment in, in some of the existing properties. Next slide. So since that time, we've removed, uh, one of the sites, site. Um, I, I think the site on Tamalpais, I think it was site, uh, not sure what it was called at that time, but it was six oh one Tamalpais. It was a very small site. The former mortuary um, on Tamalpais Drive. And so we now have ten sites that we're looking at with eighteen parcels that are part of the zoning proposal. In addition, next slide. Uh, this is the table that we've shown before, but in, in addition, we've shown that about nine units. The density at forty-one Tamil Vista Boulevard, which is the theater property. Previously, we had that listed at thirty units an acre. That was increased to thirty-five units an acre. Um, and so that went from, I think, sixty, uh, three sixty-three to seventy-four. So it's an increase of eleven there. And then as you're aware with the staff report and sort of the recent discussions that we've had with the Nugget Market in a response to that. Site two, which is the, uh, currently occupied by the five, five points fitness gym. That was reduced from thirty-nine to thirty-three units. Um, and so in total, you can see the total, uh, uh, number of units, eight hundred and sixty-eight, uh, that are produced through the rezoning of these. And I shouldn't say produced. These are these are sort of allowable densities, uh, with the rezoning of these sites. On each of these properties. And again, site one and two are, would be the lowest density, twenty-five units an acre, the orange are the medium thirty-five units an acre, and then forty units an acre at the village. And next slide, please. And just to go over, since this was obviously, um, and I imagine many, uh, members of the public are either attending online or here tonight to talk about Paradise. Uh, Paradise Drive and, and the site of the uh, site two, which is the five-point fitness gym. It's, uh, just to provide some clarification there, and I tried to provide this in a message out to our community last Friday. But it, it really consists of three lots, lots twenty-eight, which is really, uh, it's a privately owned parcel. Um, currently again, where the gym is, five-point fitness gym, and then lots fifty-five, sixty-five and sixty-six are town-owned parcels. Combined relatively small. I think they're about seventy-five hundred square feet or seven thousand square feet in size. We've heard, obviously, uh, this is, this is, uh, was a concern that was raised at the planning commission, uh, both at the workshop in November and then at the, uh, uh, December thirteenth, uh, planning commission meeting. And so, uh, just to tell you, we, we since that time uh, after the holidays and immediately after the holidays, uh, met with the Nugget on a several occasions or a couple of occasions at least over the course of two or three days. And, um, I, it developed some modifications that were intended to really address their main concerns, which were parking at the center. And, uh, through that process, um, and after making some modifications, which we're happy to talk about, you can switch the, to the next slide. Uh, the Nugget Market did respond and, and, um, provide a letter back out to community members after their initial petition. Um, that was essentially said they are supportive of the process moving forward at this point in time. And they are feel that this is uh, allows them, I, I forget the direct, direct quote that I use, but allows them to continue successfully at the center for years to come. So let's see, uh, you can go to the next slide. And I, I guess I guess I can go through just, just to be clear about what those changes are. Go back to the last slide. The Nugget Market. So the, uh, just to summarize, those changes were to limit, and this is what brought down the, the allowable number of units on the site from thirty-nine to thirty-three. Was that redevelopment was limited to developmental area of lot twenty-eight. So the town-owned parcels do not contribute or count toward any residential allowable residential density on the site. It requires a desert, residential parking to be put on the ground floor of the building as well as a smaller retail component if again, if uh, redevelopment were to occur. I, you know, I, 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 I think, um, again, I tried to spell out exactly what zoning and zoning does and doesn't do in my correspondence to the community and, and hopefully that is a little clearer now. The zoning doesn't require anything to change there. It, in fact, supports the existing and continued use of the site as, uh, gym use and allows them to expand as they currently does today too. So, um, let's go on to the next slide. Thank you. So at the November, uh, December thirteenth twenty twenty-two, the planning commission held a public hearing. They also heard concerns, uh, by the Nugget at that meeting, and they made a recommendation to the town council unanimous vote, uh, supporting the, uh, the town's rezoning proposal. Um, recommending that the town council certified the environmental, sub- subsequent environmental impact report. And, uh, also, uh, adopt a resolution to, uh, approve the, um, general plan amendment as well. Uh, so with that, I'm going to hand it over to, uh, Stuart, who I believe is, yeah, Stuart's up there. Stuart, you can now take it away, and we're going to talk about the subsequent environmental impact report and, uh, myself, Stuart. Martha will all be available for questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you. And Christine.
Great. Thanks. Can, can you hear me? Okay? Can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thanks.
Okay, great. Sorry. Um, so yes, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. As Adam mentioned, my name is Stuart Polter and I'm a senior planner with EMC Planning Group, a land use and environmental consulting firm based in Monterey. Uh, EMC on behalf of the town has prepared an environmental impact report or EIR to evaluate the environmental impacts of updates to the town's housing, land use and safety elements along with municipal code updates, all of which is a project pursuant to the environment, California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. Uh, just to provide a really quick overview of SEQA, SEQA is the state's environmental, uh, review policy and has a number of goals and objectives, but specifically one of the key purposes of SEQA is to inform both decision makers and the public on the environmental impacts of a discretionary project. Uh, SEQA requires public decision makers to identify, evaluate and disclose the environmental consequences of their decisions. Next slide. So the proposed project uh, we looked at under SEQA, obviously is the town's housing element update. However, to, in order to update the housing element in what's known as the sixth cycle housing element uh, update cycle, which covers the years twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. The town also needs to update or amend two other general plan elements, the land use element, the safety element as well as the town's municipal code under titles, uh, eighteen, which includes the zoning ordinance update to allow increased density at the ten opportunity sites. Uh, all of these actions can be categorized as general plan amendments or, and zoning amendments and are considered discretionary projects that require environmental review under SEQA. Also, I just wanted to note that for purposes of the SEQA review process for the town's housing element update, we have prepared what's known as a subsequent EIR which provides subsequent environmental analysis to the town's previously certified two thousand nine general plan EIR. Uh, subsequent EIR only needs to include information necessary to make the Uh subsequent EIR only needs to include information necessary to make the previous EIR, in this case, the twenty two thousand nine general plan EIR adequate for the proposed project. All the noticing and public review requirements are no different for a subsequent EIR as they are for a a full EIR. Next slide. Uh this next slide uh provides an overview of the raw residential unit totals that we were evaluating to um inform the environmental analysis that was included in the subsequent EIR. And I will just note that these numbers obviously reflect um the previous total of sites or total number of sites prior to some of the changes that have occurred in the last few months. But as part of the uh environmental review process at the time, we were evaluating eleven opportunity sites. Appropriate for the development of housing um for a range of income levels. And the town would reason those sites as necessary to meet the requirements of state law. The proposed project would also amend the general plan land use destinations to accommodate the changes specified in the housing element update. And as Adam previously mentioned. City staff or town staff identified eleven opportunity sites at the time that would need to be rezoned to allow more density. Is important to know that housing is already allowed on on the majority of these sites, but at a lower density. That than what it was proposed as part of, than what is proposed as part of the rezoning. The table on this slide provides just an overview of the existing and proposed residential and commercial development capacity for those eleven sites. And as you can see, as it was anticipated that the housing element update would result in a maximum. At that time, it was determined eighty three residential units spread across the eleven sites. And there was a a slight decrease in the amount of total commercial square footage identified at that time and in the EIR. Next slide. So um the environmental issues covered in the subsequent EIR included these uh topics, including visual resources and aesthetics, air quality, biological resources. Energy, greenhouse gas emissions. Noise. Public services and utilities, which cover a number of areas. And service provide providers and utilities. Transportation, which covers the state mandated vehicle miles traveled metric. Tribal cultural resources and wildfire hazards. It's important to note that all the significant impacts that were identified in the subsequent EIR have been determined to be mitigated to a less than significant level. Next slide. Uh next, I just wanted to call your attention to a few topic areas covered in the subsequent EIR that were determined to create potentially significant impacts. Again, all of them are mitigatable impacts, however, including visual resources and aesthetics, air quality. Which is covers the consistency with applicable air quality plans. Biological resources. Noise, public services, utilities. Tribal cultural resources. And vehicle miles traveled. Again, all of these impacts are reduced to a less than significant level. Through general plan and housing element policies and implementation programs along with identified mitigation measures. Next slide. Finally, per sequel requirements, the draft subsequent EIR evaluated several project alternatives in section seventeen. To identify possible alternatives to further mitigate project impacts. The three alternatives identified were the no project alternative, which evaluates maintaining the status quo under the already adopted housing element and general plan. The second is the no buffer alternative, which evaluated development under the housing element update. Minus the HCD recommended twenty percent residential buffer. And therefore, only implementing the HCD identified seven hundred and twenty five units target for the town. And finally, a twenty percent buffer alternative, which proposes a reduction in the total residential units. Which included uh eight hundred eighty three units at that time as included in the project description. And the reduction in twenty percent would reduce the total to eight hundred and seventy units. Uh the sequel also requires that the town identify the environmental superior alternative. Which was identified as either the no project alternative or alternative to the no buffer alternative. Um however, the no project alternative does is not legally feasible, given it does not meet the town state mandated housing target. And the no buffer alternative does not comply with the state's no net loss um requirements under the note net loss law. Which ensures development opportunities um remain available throughout the six cycle housing element to accommodate jurisdictions arena. And that I think covers the alternatives. Um I'll turn to the next slide. So this next slide just provides an overview of the public review process. For the subsequent EIR, which was the draft subsequent EIR was made available for a forty five day public review period. Which started on October seventh and ended on November twenty first. A public meeting was held on October twenty seventh to accept public comments. And in total, three public agencies um submitted comments and responses to those comments were prepared as part of the final subsequent EIR. Next slide. And finally, I just wanted to note uh that due to some of the subsequent changes that did occur after the release of the draft subsequent EIR. Uh it was determined that a errata was necessary to address uh any potential changes to the impact analysis contained in the draft subsequent EIR. As a result of these project changes. In short, the errata, which is included in your agenda packet, will be included with future approval documentation for the housing element update in the final subsequent EIR. Uh this erratic concluded that all of the previously prepared analysis impacted terminations and mitigation measures were still adequate and applicable. And no changes to the draft subsequent EIR were required. And the RADA identified uh and evaluated some of the changes that you can see on the slide, including at that time, the removal of site one. And some additional changes to the density require um allowed density for certain senior housing projects as well as residential care facilities. And that concludes my overview of the environmental review process, so I'll turn over to uh Martha, but I'll be available again. Take any questions on the the sequel process at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Stuart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council and members of the community as well. Uh the proposed zoning ordinance amendment rezones eighteen parcels to allow greater density than what is currently allowed. And in addition, the amendments also amend chapter eighteen oh four, which is the definitions chapter. And it also creates a new overlay district within chapter eighteen eighteen. Next slide. So this map shows the town's zoning districts and also the different overlay districts that currently exist. So our all parcels in town how are are do have a zoning designation. And these are codified within title eighteen of the municipal code. And there is a chapter for each different type of designation, which includes residential, commercial and industrial. And these districts establish such things such as setbacks, height and density. So as part of the rezoning, we are creating a new overlay within chapter eighteen eighteen. And these standards would only apply to parcels that are developed in the future with a residential project. A mixed use project that includes residential or with a residential care facility. And for all other types of developments, the existing zonies zoning, so the base zoning would continue to apply. Next slide. Uh this map shows the three different housing element overlay districts that are proposed. There is HE one, and there are two parcels proposed within this sub area. And this allows a maximum density of twenty five units an acre. The HE three are shown in orange. There are seven different. Oh, sorry, HE two shown in orange. There are seven different properties within this this sub area. And the allowable density is thirty five units and then up to forty with the senior housing project. And lastly, the HE three, which is shown in red, there is one a site in this designation, and this is the Macy's site at the village, and this allows a density of forty units an acre. And next slide. Uh this slide shows the different uh sub areas and then all of the sites located with within each sub area. So again, HE one, there are two sites. Um HE three, there are seven sites, and then there is one site within the HE three. Next slide. Uh this slide shows the different pathway for reviewing a project. And it is dependent on what type of project is proposed on one of these housing opportunity sites. So again, this overlay district is creating uh new densities and development standards that would only apply to a project that includes a residential or a mixed use project with residential or a residential care facility. So for any types of projects that fall into that category, then the housing element overlay district would apply. For all other types of project, the existing zoning district would continue to apply. So this allows a property owner to redevelop their site um and to expand an existing commercial use or to redevelop with another commercial use. And in this case, the existing zoning, the base zoning would apply to the that redevelopment. Next slide. Uh this is again, is just to kind of uh provide some context of how a project would be evaluated at one of these housing opportunity sites, depending on what is being proposed by the the property owner. So this is a hypothetical um future development at five eight oh four Paradise Drive, which is in the HE two sub area. And the column on the left shows the regulations within the HE two sub area, and then on the right is the development standards of the base zoning, the underlying zoning, which is the C four district in this case. And you can see that things such as floor area, setbacks, height and density differ between the standards being created in the overlay district and the existing standards in the C four commercial district. Next slide. So this map shows the housing element overlay districts that are being proposed. The overlay districts are shown in a dark gray marking, and there are three different hatch patterns for the three different sub areas. So we differentiate between the HE one, the HE two and the HE three sub area areas by hatching marks. And I know this is hard to read. Um this is um an attachment to the the ordinance. But essentially, the we the ten different numbers that you see on the map are the ten ten different housing opportunity sites that are being rezoned with the housing element overlay. Next slide. Uh the ordinance also includes a variety of development standards. And these development standards would apply to, again, to a residential project. A residential project that includes um a mixed use project that includes residential and also to a residential care facility. These standards do not apply to any other type of uh potential development that may be proposed on these sites. So there are kind of three different categories of development standards within the ordinance. There are standards that apply to all of the housing opportunity sites. Then there are standards that are specific to the three different sub areas. And lastly, there are standards that are specific to each of the sites. So I'll go over these kind of different categories in more detail. Um so starting with standards that apply universally to all of the sites. It includes such thing as bicycle parking, um vehicle parking, uh public frontage requirements, lighting requirements. Um screening requirements and also landscaping as well. Uh so this, uh next slide. Uh this slide shows the required vehicle and bicycle parking standards included in the draft ordinance. And the proposed uh parking standards are that match these parking standards of the objective design and development standards that was adopted by the town council about a year ago. Um these standards are also very similar to the Tam Ridge uh development as well. Um we the we did make one change to the guest parking space based on feedback received from a planning commissioner. And also from feedback from um a couple residential developers. The prior iteration of the ordinance had a requirement of one and a half spaces per uh every five units, and it's been revised to one space per every five units for that guest parking. The ordinance also includes biking park, bicycle parking requirements. Every unit would be required to provide one bicycle parking space. Which must be in a secure uh indoor area. Uh there is a an allowance for a reduction to the standard if the project has an onsite bike share program. Next slide. Uh the ordinance also includes a lighting standards. Uh staff develop these standards in consultation with a plans examiner for a foreleaf that reviews a lot of uh plan checks throughout the Bay Area. And this particular individual is very well versed in lighting standards. So there essentially are two different types of standards in the ordinance. Those on the left would apply to a project that just includes residential. And this is very similar to the lighting standards that are applied for single family uh developments in in town. And then on the right hand side are standards that would apply to a mixed use project or to a residential care facility. And for these types of projects, the lighting lighting needs to comply with the California Green Building Code standards. Uh next slide. Uh the ordinance also includes public frontage standards. And the purpose of this requirement is to improve the existing streetscape and the current pedestrian environment. The majority of sidewalks in town are only four feet in width, and this is very, it's very challenging for two people to walk side by side on such a narrow sidewalk. So as part of the ordinance, there is a standard that sidewalks need to be increased in width. And there are two different options. The first is a a width of ten feet with a tree grate embedded within that ten feet. And the second option is an eight foot clear sidewalk with a separated four foot planting strip. Um so this uh image shows the ad example of an eight foot clear sidewalk. And then a four foot planting strip located between the street and the sidewalk. Next slide. And this is the second public frontage uh option, which is a ten foot wide sidewalk with a tree embedded in a tree grate. Next slide. And these pictures show the example of that second option. This is on Tamil Vista Boulevard. In front of the ta- uh map Tam Ridge project now now called Bell Mount Tam, so it's a ten foot wide sidewalk. And you see the tree grate um embedded within that sidewalk. And the ordinance also has a requirement for street trees. They're required to be planted along the frontage at thirty feet between between trees. Next slide. So the next type of standards are development standards specific to the three different sub areas. And this includes such thing as density, height, usable open space. That step back requirements and then massing and articulation standards. Um next slide. Uh this table shows the three different sub areas within the overlay. And as you can see, HE one has the lowest density and also the lowest heights. And then the density and heights um increase in the HE two and then in the HE three, obviously, as well. Um the usable open space requirement is a requirement per each unit. And uh things that would satisfy this are um things such as swimming pools, rec rooms, courtyards and even private balconies. And the step back requirement is only in the HE two and HE three sub area. And the purpose of this requirement is to break up the mass of a taller building. And um it it's requires that as stories increase that it be stepped back ten feet from the the wall plane. Next slide. Um in addition, the draft ordinance includes massing and articulation standards, and the purpose of these standards are to break up larger buildings. And uh we worked with the Macy's development team on the development of these standards. And it requires such things as um change in materials or window patterns. And also change in the plane of uh of of walls. And these are the the composition changes and the planer changes are required at intervals of two hundred feet. So really, the intent So really, the intent of this is to br- is to break up a facade, to not have a long facade that doesn't have any changes to that facade. And uh also these similar standards also exist in the HE two sub area as well. And they only apply to sites that have a frontage of two hundred and fifty feet or more. Next slide. Uh, the ordinance also includes height articulation standards and these just apply to the Macy's site. Um, which is site ten. And again, these standards were developed while working um collaboratively with the Macy's team. And uh at the planning commission workshop in November, we heard from several commissioners, some concern about the seventy foot. Height limit. This is the only site that allows a height of seventy feet. And so these, really the goal of these standards are to, you know, to 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 prevent a situation where you have. A building where the entirety of the building is at that height. Um, so while the maximum height is seventy seventy feet, the maximum average height, I apologize, it's cut off, is fifty two feet. Um, in addition, there's a requirement that at least thirty five percent of the buildings be no taller than twenty five feet. And in addition, a maximum of thirty five percent can be within that sixty feet to seventy feet range. So really, the goal of these standards are to um to vary the height of of buildings. Next slide. And lastly, there are site specific development standards and these include setbacks. Um, and as staff was developing this, the step setbacks, we looked at the existing site context. For several of the sites, there's a requirement to have both a minimum and a maximum front setback. And really, the the goal and purpose of that is to bring buildings closer to the sidewalk to create kind of a more pedestrian walkable environment. But that doesn't work for all sites, obviously. Um, so the the kind of the. The staff evaluated the existing context as we um in developing these setbacks. And if any uh council members have questions on any of the proposed setbacks, we do have some graphics we can share if that's helpful. Next slide. Uh, the ordinance also includes amendments to chapter eighteen oh four. Uh, two existing definitions are being revised, which includes a senior housing and also residential care facility. And the uh we're also, the council is also considering general plan land use element updates. And as Adam mentioned. Uh, the purpose of these updates is to ensure internal consistency with the zoning ordinance. Next slide. So the land use element updates create creates a new land use designation within the general plan. And there are three different variants of that land use designation. Which is housing element mixed use neighborhood, housing element mixed use corridor, and housing element mixed use core. And these de- different uh designations are differentiated between their minimum lot size. The allowable floor area ratio and also the allowable um maximum density. So the housing element mixed use neighborhood i- is with it corresponds to the HE one. And then the housing element mixed use corridor corresponds to the HE two in the zoning ordinance and the mixed mixed use core corresponds to the HE three. Next slide. Uh, this map shows the general plan land use designations and the new mixed ha- mixed use housing element designation. And uh there's three new colors are being added to the general plan land use map. Um, the mixed use neighborhood is kind of that yellow color. And again, there are two sites, sites one and two. And then the mixed use corridor is that darker blue color. And that's sites three through nine. And the mixed use core is the Macy's site, which is kind of that purplish color. And the general plan land use map will also be amended um in addition to the text amendments. Next slide. Um, so Adam went over the slide already. Um, we're he- here tonight for the town council to consider the the rezoning, the land use element and also. Um, certifying the environmental document. And it's a priority of the town to have the rezonings com- approved by the end of the month to avoid the buy right consequence. And we are continuing to work with HCD on uh changes to the housing element. To address their comments and anticipate being back in the spring with the housing and safety element updates. Next slide. The staff is recommending that the town council take the following actions that are outlined on this slide. And um that concludes our presentation. Adam, myself, Christine and also Stuart are all available for questions that you have.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to open up questions to the council for staff. So does the council have any questions for staff?
I don't know if Pat did, if she wanted to go for.
Pat, would you like to go?
Uh, I don't, I don't think I have any questions right now.
I have a few. Um, the changes that were made in relation to Nugget market, I'll just say Nugget market instead of trying to figure out sites. You know, those changes address the concerns that were noted in the hundred and eighty plus comments.
I don't see how we could, I would hazard a guess that it doesn't address every single comment. There's a lot of different things were said in those a hundred and eighty comment. Letters or eh eh comments. Many of them were made before the fact that, you know, actually we we did come up with these. Changes, I would think, um, again, my um response to the community, I think. Uh, tries to make it clear that it, I would hope it would address any parking concerns. And I would hope it would address any concerns of that people have regarding the Nugget's success, future success, given that they're the business. Operator and owner. I think we have um representative of the Nugget here on our call tonight. They could speak to that. I did speak to uh the gym owner actually today as well and had a conversation and and he expressed no concerns. He's very familiar with how real estate works in the town and locally and understands the complexity and and. Involved with actually changing uses at a site. So he's uh expressed that to me as well. Um, so I'm not going to say I that what we did addressed every single comment there. That wouldn't be fair to our. Members of the community who put their time into expressing those comments. I'll let them speak to them for themselves. But I think. It, I would hope it went a law a a long way um to to doing so because um we heard parking. Um, I have looked into traffic concern. I'm happy to speak to those as well if need be. And uh and then as well, the zoning and just clarifying what zoning actually does and does not do. I think hopefully alleviates, while I can't say a hundred percent, that something won't happen there. I think it should alleviate the concerns that the zoning is there. It supports existing units. No, nobody at the town wants to do. Uh, it, you know, it is is taking, we're not recommending the town council take over control of the center and actually change. Uh, uses at the site. This is still privately owned property. And if there's successful businesses operating, we have no reason to believe that that wouldn't continue for. Uh, at least the short near term, you know, so and medium term. So I, you know, it's. Eh eh, that's where I'll, I'll leave it. We tried our, tried, tried my best and tried our best, I think, all of us to do so by. Engaging with the Nug. And I I do want to thank the Nugget for engaging with the town as well um and coming to us and expressing what those concerns are and then. Willing to, as we have throughout this process, willing to sort of um. Dig in on how we might be able to resolve some of those concerns that were raised. And so uh that's what we've done throughout this process. And I think we were successful there. So.
I think, and I'm sorry, just clarify. So you did contact the owners of Five Point Fitness?
Yes.
And they have, I don't want to put words in your mouth, no issues with the rezoning or. Have it coming out of your mouth instead of mine. I don't want to put words.
Yeah, no, that's exactly. I, I, you know, and I, and I expressed to him, I said, if you're getting, you know, uh, this is Brian. Who I've, who I've worked with in the past, but no, he he is confident in their. Continued ability to uh run their business and be successful and provide uh services to the to the community. So. Uh, he didn't express any concerns. Otherwise, he would be here tonight. I offered him, offered him to, you know, to come or express any concerns he had to me. And I would relay those uh to the town council, but he was perfectly happy to uh sit sit this out. Um, so.
Okay. Has there been any communications or contact with the actual property owners for Five Points?
This is LL, uh, you know, I don't know the actual folks. I believe they're out of San Francisco who own the property. Um, you know, and we know that the gym does have a lease currently. Um. That's what they abide by right now. So we, there are, you know, we were able to. Have conversations or at least contact through letters um with almost all the property owners with the exception of. Uh, that site and the Herc rental site as well. Um, and then we're, we've sort of lost, the only other property that we just don't have direct communication with is the uh. The theater property down the street here, the Scandinavian Design Zones. We used to have communication with them, but no longer.
Okay, after I have a few more, um, I'm going back to Five Point Fitness. Someone roll. On, I think there's two lots that are actually town owned. On one of the maps, it looked like the back parking lot. There's a line there. It looks like most of that parking lot is town owned. But then after that line, who owns, is that wetlands area or is it actually town owned? You know, I'm just going by that one.
Do we want, we can pull that up? Uh, yeah, I want to be specific.
Talking about specifically behind the building that extends outside the property line of the larger. Property, at least from the satellite, and it could be just an overlay.
There's park, yeah, there's the.
There's a back parking lot there. I called.
There's, yeah, so there's a portion of that is on town owned property and then a portion of it is also on the uh property of where the five point. Fitness gym is as well, that extends to the back.
Okay, it's just weird the way the line was.
The lines are actually, the lines throughout the center, I mean, they were just cut really at the partitions, it looks like of. Of the existing party walls between the two, the 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 businesses. I I'm not sure how or why they were cut the way they were.
Okay. And while she's doing that, can you explain state, the state density bonus and how that may affect?
Absolutely, yeah. No, I think, I think this is really important um to discuss and that, you know. The densities that we're describing are. Are uh do not include and it would be, can't. Sort of don't, there's multiple state laws that allow for various different bonuses of different percentages above and beyond. The maximum allowable density that the town may have or any local jurisdiction may have in their uh zoning ordinance. And so um typically, this is a sort of incentive for developers to. Um, basically provide affordable housing uh within their properties or in their buildings. Which the town also requires to a certain extent or a certain level. And so I think at the very, the very least, and Martha, please jump in if I'm stating this, but. If you provide up to, you know, very low and low income up to twenty percent of your units. Then you're eligible for a thirty five percent bonus above and beyond uh in terms of density, in terms of the number of units per acre, above and beyond any local ordinance. That's entirely controlled by the state um and and their rules.
Um, so I'm sorry, we have no control over that, correct?
No.
As long as they meet that, the state.
It's all laid out in state law, exactly how that works. There are even higher densities uh bonuses for. Hundred percent affordable projects and whatnot. Um, we did see it, just for a local example, the Casa Buena um project over on. Uh, Casa Buena, the condominium units that were, uh, that did take advantage of a density bonus um in night, in two thousand fifteen. It was originally based on the units per acre. I think about thirteen units were permitted or twelve. And they ultimately built sixteen with that project.
Okay, so just, I I I like examples, it's just taking, um, if you just use the one eleven lucky drive where it looks like it's twenty five units that are allowed. And their state bone bonus density. And I know there's different criteria, just you're picking up your calculator very good. How many units, um, more units could somebody build? And would that also affect the height?
Yeah, so, so there's um, yeah, density bonus. So if I take uh twenty five times. One point three five, I'm just going to use thirty five percent, thirty three point seven five, so thirty four units.
Okay.
Um.
Increases it by nine.
That, and that, and again, there's very, you can get, there's now all sorts of, there's like multiple different. Density bonuses that are out there depending on what you do. So it's, it's, it's a, it's evolving frankly every year. Um, at the state legislature in terms of the density bonus law. Uh, height, so with that as well, there are things that are called concessions. Uh, and exceptions, um, which do allow for. Um, if a developer can show and prove that essentially um. Um, a concession is needed. The development standards are too constraining for to um. Uh, uh, yeah, provide enough constraints, physical constraints on the development of the affordable housing, then they are able to request. A concession from the town for, for example, height or setback or what have you, a a a development standard. That that actually relates to them trying to fit the units in. Um, I think the Casa Buena one that that they also took advantage of a concession and went from a height of thirty to thirty three. On a couple of the units, the the buildings over there. So it did exceed the height in a couple of examples. Um, and really, that is um, the burden's really on the town to prove otherwise. And it becomes a very. Um, the state has made it very difficult for towns to really sort of say, no, it's not needed. It's not really a. There's evidence needs to be put forth, very um sophisticated, I would call, and expensive, probably costly. Studies and analyses would need to be done to to show that in fact, the developers claim that he needs it or not. Um, is is in fact, uh. Uh, basically to counter an argument such as that.
Okay, and while we're on that, um, because again, I like visual, in an HE one zone, I can't remember the height. Can you give an example of like? Something in town that would be some, some, something similar to that height?
Yeah, well.
I'm just trying to get an, I I know you can sit there and say, you know, the height's thirty four feet, but trying to visualize thirty four feet, it's like, you know, ten of me or something like that. It's hard to do.
Well, it's there, yeah, so there's the enclave, which I've been talking about on Casa Buena. So there, you know, the way to think about.
Or how many stories?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's three stories, uh, thirty four, forty is getting closer, three and a half stories, if you. You know, with the pitched roof and basically you could have a dormer in there or something like that. Uh, fifty feet, which is HE two, is more like a four story building, um, because, and we've actually worked this out. A lot of the, all these sites are in the floodplain. So you're going to have a ground floor that's ri- elevated out with likely no residential use on the ground. Could be their commercial or parking. Um, Macy's, which we're lining up to seventy, that's a six story building. That's, you're not going to get more than really six stories in that height. So um, think of uh the examples uh for those on the Bay side of town, San Clemente Place Apartments are. Uh, two and three stories above the podium, the ground floor parking. So that's essentially a three and four story. Uh, apartment building. Uh, Tam Ridge, right over here, um, you have the same sort of cost, you have, you have. Two and uh three stories above a ground floor of parking as well, with the highest build, highest height being forty eight feet. Four story building, essentially, three stories on top of a a parking structure. So the idea was to actually, most of the sites, with the exception of Macy's, keep those. Keep those heights um within the scale that of some of our apartment buildings that we see throughout town. I mean, there's not many of them, but we have scale comparisons that we can point to and look at and see how they actually relate to. Uh, the street or buildings around them.
Okay, and then um can you just briefly just describe, even though we're changing the zoning. It does not necessarily mean that eh eh these sites would ever be built on, but if somebody did want to build that, they still have to go through the whole planning process, correct?
They would have to go through, and again, one of the reasons we want to get the rezoning adopted is so that they still need to go through a design review process. However, even if they do go through a design review process, there are certain things that can and can't be required. For instance, you. Um, the, whatever the density is, that needs to be a allowed. Um, but it, there still is the opportunity for discourse and dialogue with the community and to make modifications to a project to make it, you know. Fit in better with with the the context of the neighborhood. And so there still would be a design review process and there would be hearings at the the planning commission. In addition, there could be some additional environmental analysis that would be required um without a a project, you know, we can't say. Say for certain, um, but any project would, you know, tear off the subsequent environment impact report and. Potentially, there may be some additional environmental analysis required as well.
Okay, thanks. I got one more, sorry. Um. Does a SEIR, does that factor in? Because I know there's a lot of concern about impacted neighborhoods, traffic, infrastructure, and all that. Does that address? Some of those cons- concerns or again, some of those issues? Again, the highest one is probably related to traffic.
So I'll I'll start and then Stuart can can jump in. Um so the the subsequent environmental impact report evaluated the traffic impacts from from the projects and uh Sequo has changed as far as how traffic is evaluated. It used to be level of service, which essentially was how long you you waited to, you know, get from point A to point B and what your, you know, the lights and all of that. Now it's based on vehicle miles traveled. Um so it's, but the both LOS and vehicle miles traveled were evaluated as part of the analysis and there were some traffic impacts identified in the subsequent environmental impact report, and so there are mitigation measures um that have been incorporated. And for instance, all projects are required to provide um a traffic management plan. There's some analysis that projects, future projects have to provide to reduce their vehicle miles traveled. Stuart, do you want to add to that?
Uh, no, actually, you you did a very good job of uh summarizing the the conclusions of the subsequent E I R as relates to uh transportation impacts um. But again, I it in terms of the environmental review for each of these projects, um it's gonna be more site specific, um looking at the the issues for each of these sites um and as long as the projects substantially comply with um are consistent with the existing environmental review and the the level of uh impact does not exceed what's been previously evaluated, then there would not be a a a much additional review required. It'd just be a sort of a cursory staff level, if if as long as the project's consistent with with the environmental and impact report.
Okay, and I know I focus in on traffic, but does that play also to services such as like police and fire services also?
Yes, yes, um the E I R does capture um a certain assumed level of um service impacts to, you know, fire, police, uh emergency medical services as well as utilities. So there's a a pretty broad range of um service impacts looked at and all of those impacts were either less than significant or if are mitigated to a less than significant level as identified in the E I R.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, and I think I'll just, with respect to police and fire, there are, there is a mitigation requirement in the secret document that's in the mitigate that we're asking to certify tonight, that would require them to pay impact fees, uh projects that have additional service requirements on those services. Um and essentially, at this point, without adopting a new um impact fee for new development, which is something we certainly um can put on our work plan. That it's essentially gonna be negotiated with the um fire department and the police department.
What, I'm sorry, what about park and rec? Any impact fees related to?
There's a park.
Related services.
Well, we we have an existing fee structure for that, it relates to subdivisions. Um but it's not uh currently applied to parks, so there is an open space requirement for on each site. That's part of why we had the open space requirement built into the zoning standards. Uh the other thing is, I I think it's important to know on traffic is that, again, one of the things, these sites pretty much every site has an existing use on it that draws traffic to the site and requires and has parking in uh backs as well or has demand. So um potentially, if there is redevelopment of a site, I mean, you you again, look at the difference between a wind cup, uh styrofoam cup factory that was there with trucks and so on and so forth versus an apartment complex. So there's, it's just, it's, these aren't, we're not talking about like green fields where there's nothing there today and you're you're building new development, there's existing development pretty much on all these sites, on all these sites.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, um so Rose, I'm no, Rosa, why don't you ask?
I'll just ask this because it is related to the to traffic. So between um V M T and then the other measurement that you measured, that you mentioned, level of service, which of those two measures is more, is one of them more lenient?
Well, that's a good question. Um I'll take a stab at it, but uh and maybe Stuart, you chime in, but really the idea was that uh what what sort of level of service was doing is was a metric of basically saying if you propose development in an already sort of urban area or area with some density in traffic, you're gonna impact, you're gonna create an impact at that site. And so what it was doing was actually, uh and some of that impact may be a costly, I don't know, you couldn't even widen the road or um new streetlights need to go in and and whatnot. And so what it was actually easier to do was build far out into farmland and greenfields because there, there's no traffic. You could build the same development out farther away and uh you actually have no traffic impacts because there's no existing traffic there. Great, you know. The problem with that is now everyone's traveling by car and vehicles much further distances to get to work and that's creating a different environmental impact that was not actually analyzed under the Sequo analysis. And so the change was really to sort of say, look, we're, we have the wrong metric here for um really the environment and if we're serious about reducing emissions, uh we need to start looking at not actually how many, where um development should occur if to reduce the amount of vehicle miles traveled and the emissions associated with that. And so that really leads to infill development and already urban areas are going to be have lesser impacts because the travel time to jobs and services and X, X, Y, and Z, it's close, it's already developed around those sites. So I don't know if lenient to one way is, the other is lenient. I do think there's a logic and rationale for V M T being the appropriate measure from a actual environmental impact standpoint. The LOS measures inconvenience, I think, for drivers actually sitting in maybe a, a, you know, at a light for school hours, as we know, it can be uh more challenging.
That answers it, because it's, I think it's a really important thing as community members look at the whatever impacts they may feel um that the other side of it is. You know, there's another side of it that affects the environment as well, so you have to kind of balance those, so thank you.
Is that all, Rosa? Eli?
Thank you, and also, I'm glad we're asking a lot of questions about traffic, because I think that that seemed to be kind of where the public's head was at too, um in their public comment. And I also just wanted to add, um and let me know if I'm thinking about this wrong, but I feel like there's probably a correlation, right, between uh V M T and LOS in that if you've got more vehicle miles being traveled on the same road system, you're gonna have uh you know, a a lower level of service. So it it seems like that would still capture, to some extent, i- if not directly, would still capture kind of um the idea that there will be more traffic, so to speak, but it also captures the environmental side. So I thought, you know, maybe it is a, you know, I could see how it would be a better metric and I think I understand um why they made that change. Um just a couple other questions. Um so one, uh the staff report here says um altogether, the town's site inventory demonstrates that a total of one thousand eleven new housing units can be developed in Corder Madera in the coming cycle. I understand the Rena number is seven twenty-five and then with our twenty percent buffer, that's essentially required under state law, we're at, I think, like eight seventy. Uh so how did, where, what's the relationship between that eight seventy and this one thousand eleven?
So those additional units are ADUs, we're assuming a hundred ADUs will be developed in the next eight-year cycle. And then there's also twenty-five single-family homes that we've assumed, uh which would be through some vacant lots in town and then also through homeowners splitting their lots under the provisions of Senate Bill Nine. Um so those are, those a hundred and twenty-five units are on on top of the um I think it's eight hundred and and six sixty-eight units per the the revised. So we're actually at a buffer of over twenty percent when you take into account the potential development across the ten housing opportunity sites, plus the ADUs and then plus those additional single-family homes.
And is it the case uh that if you list a, if you list a site in your housing inventory for for a given housing element cycle um and it doesn't get developed, housing doesn't get built there, then you're not allowed to relist it in future cycles?
You can relist it, however, you um need to allow housing by right if you relist it, is that correct, Christine? Um so, so yeah, so if one of these sites doesn't get developed and then we decide we want to put it on the next cycle, then it would be more of a ministerial review process for any potential development.
Okay, got it. So since we've got this kind of extra buffer in the difference between the eight sixty-eight and this one thousand eleven, would it benefit the town possibly to reduce what we're showing in the inventory, given that we've got this kind of surplus buffer and kind of keep that in our back pocket, so to speak, for future cycles, or is that not really uh an element here?
Yeah, I know, I think we we sort of grappled with this. Um one was not knowing exactly where H C D was gonna come down on our site inventory initially, and so um we sort of grappled with what's the right number and and where um where to land there. Um we certainly could keep so a a a site in reserve potentially. I think it's not um what I, what worries me is that we go, the reason why you have a buffer is because you if something gets developed and it doesn't max out to the maximum you're anticipating, then you have to ensure by now with state law that your other sites can sort of make up the difference, not only in terms of total number, but in terms of like the allocation of low, very low, moderate and market rate units as well. And so um I think uh it it's just a question of how much of a buffer do we really want to have to make sure that we're planning for that and um and so um uh I feel certainly um good about where we are now, given not only um uh the process that we've been through in the strategy, I think, I I I I go back to sort of the criteria criteria we used to get to this point and uh finding sites that I think were able to meet this Rena goal. Um and and so I I would say um if we want to essentially in our final draft to H C D to consider that it's uh pulling a site in reserve, so to speak, after the rezoning, I'd be comfortable with that because we could actually then.
So it's not too late after tonight?
I I know, because it ultimately what we do is we submit a site inventory um to H C D. The only concern is we've already been through one round with them, and so if we start to monkey around with our sites, there could very well be comments as to our reopening of the sites with H C D in terms of now, or they're gonna put a finer sort of finer comb into exactly.
So if you have more questions, that's fine, but I just want a clarification on this because, you know, this is a two-year process we've gone through and I've heard a lot about why we designated these different zones. And the twenty percent buffer, because we have a large Macy's project allows us to meet that number, but if Macy's doesn't go through with it and we still want to meet the criteria of doing all the Rena, you have to have this other mix, right? And so, and you can't just load up a few sites, uh and also if you could clarify this, Adam, my understanding is the reason that we have our ones and we've already lost some of them um through previous kind of engagement um is that the state requires different mixes of sizes and scales for us to provide. So if we lose some of that, if it's one of these smaller ones that goes into reserve, would that then take us out of compliance?
Yeah, I I think it's more about a number, having more sites than less. It's like if we had only three or four or five, you know, then you'd be worried about if
Right.
this consequence, you know, so I think there is, I I it, there is some flexibility. I'm not gonna, you know, we've, I think, done a good job. We're in a much better position than I think a lot of other towns and cities that are struggling to even get to their Rena and their buffers, but I think we're in uh a good position to, um even with the rezonings, I would still recommend going through with rezonings.
Yeah, yeah.
Um but then consider potentially um holding out a site in reserve um so to speak. I just, I do worry about sort of the reopening of the.
Yeah, no worries. Hey, hey, look, here, in the in the interest of time tonight, you've, you clearly understand the the strategy of housing compliance much better than I do, and it's clear that you have thought about this duly, so that satisfies my question there. Uh thank you. Um a couple other questions, a couple E I R questions, so these may be a question for Stuart. So one, going back to the traffic thing. Um I think one thing that residents were struggling with is that obviously, we have to analyze what the traffic impacts of this rezoning could be, but at the same time, it's all hypothetical, right? Because there's no, there's not a single actual project being proposed. Um and so I guess presumably, when when you do this E I R and you evaluate what the traffic impacts of the rezoning would be, I'm I'm guessing you have to make sort of certain assumptions about like what's likely to be true of these projects with regards to how many cars they, you know, would attract to the site, you know, every day and things like that. Are you able to touch briefly on kind of like what some of those assumptions are, just so residents can understand a little bit better? Even though, again, this is sort of speculative in nature right now, what the broad strokes of how this is evaluated are? Let me know if that was not clear.
Sorry. I think, okay, um you know, I I think the, I I wish our traffic consultant, Hexagon Transportation Consultants was here to kind of give you a more detailed explanation on some of their assumptions, but um certainly, I, the best I can do at the moment is just point you toward to the draft E I R and the uh Hexagon Report that's was prepared, um the V M T analysis. I think that will give you a sense of the some of the assumptions that are built in, but unfortunately, I'm not able to give you a detailed uh assessment on what those assumptions were. But I don't know if um Adam or Martha has any any input, but um
Yeah, I'll just, I'll add that when we're looking at the different housing opportunity sites, we assumed the maximum density for each site, and then we also assumed a twenty percent of lower area ratio for commercial. And it's, it's very likely that for some of these sites, they'll be developed with a commercial-only project. So essentially, you've, you know, we've analyzed both traffic impacts of a residential project and then combined with commercial square footage. So there's, you know, possibility that traffic impacts actually may be less than what was analyzed if some of these sites are not developed as a mixed-use project as was analyzed. And then also for the Macy's site, we evaluated um a commercial square footage of point three four in addition to the three hundred unit. So it all kind of depends on how these sites are developed and if they're, you know, developed with both the commercial and square footage that was analyzed.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Um another uh E I R question, so um about utilities, so I understand uh that the E I R did uh analyze among other impacts, uh impacts on energy resources. Um but energy resources were not mentioned, I don't think, in the uh mitigation report, which uh kind of suggests that that the E I R did not foresee uh any particular, um you know, issues with like increased demand, outstripping supply or something like that with energy. Is that something that you're able to touch on uh briefly, Stuart?
Yeah, just like, I mean, um the E I R does do a pretty comprehensive review of all the um state requirements as far as uh evaluation of of energy resources. And just based on the the thresholds that are set out by the state, um you know, looking at the various types of of energy use for residential projects. Um the the level of anticipated development uh did not rise above that that threshold for those various types of energy use. Um so the determination uh for energy use was was less than significant, so there was no need for mitigation to address those impacts.
Great, thank you. And then last uh question, I think this is an easy one, is the the town center clock tower, is that the tallest building in Corder Madera?
I think it's actually the office building.
Okay, and and how tall is that?
That's sixty feet.
Okay, great. Um those, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh so I have.
Sorry, and that's the office building next in the town center.
Um, so uh thank you for uh going through traffic. I'll I'll speak to it more broadly. Um I feel like this was um the the responses that were mandated were very specific about the use case of a adjacent leasing corporate facility, but I think that there's bigger um influencers that are also happening in our evaluation of the overall project, and I want to just touch on some key points. And I want to just touch on some key points that matter to me as we evaluate all the um, impacts across the town. Um, so I think one of them was um, you know, if we don't meet the state mandates outside of loss of control um, of uh, of the reviewed, it it can the state also punish us by withholding financial um, monies due to the town?
I'll turn it back on. Um, there are certainly financial penalties. It's uh, when you say that they're due to the town, I think it's, I'm not, yeah, that maybe otherwise accrued to the town. Correct. Um, yeah, there's, there's also um, more, there's just fines as well that can be imposed if we don't have a compliant housing element. And that could be done through uh, courts, the court system. Um, and it's actually the fines are laid out, I believe, in the state legislation as well. Um, and so.
I think that's an important thing. The other one is, is being on the Transportation Authority of Moran and seeing the the town go for larger state um, funded infrastructure, especially for roads. Um, it's my understanding that if you successfully meet arena numbers, that you actually have bonuses as far as an applicant to those larger uh, state infrastructure funds. So that that we would be rewarded as a town for meeting these kind of criteria. Is that correct?
Yeah, oftentimes, actually, in order to uh, um, apply for a lot of the grants that we certainly currently apply for and that RJ does as part of the Public Works team, you know, you have to show that you have a compliant housing element as well as part of those grant application processes. Even if you don't, you won't essentially, you can't even put your applications uh, into the to the hopper, so to speak. So um, certainly, there's a, there's a tie in there to state transportation funds. So right, and we made the point of this in one of the workshops that actually developing the housing plan allows us to actually access funds in order to actually address some of the traffic concerns that are out there. One of the big ones that we've done recently are, you know, we're talking about the Complete Streets projects on Paradise Drive, the Expanded sidewalks. All those programs with grant funds um, help uh, to um, provide other modes of obviously transportation as well in those areas. And there are some also some engineering solutions as well tied to some of the development that could happen at the Macy's site. For example, there's an engineer, there's a already.
Development fees can basically.
There's already a funded funded program that Restoration Hardware paid into Nordstrom's paid into. And so if there was a project there, there'd be a that intersection of San Clemente and Tammy Pius Drive or Old Redwood Highway would have to be reengineered.
Yeah, I know that there's some egress issues at the TAM level that has been discussed about finance. Okay. But outside of that, um, I I like Fred's idea of letting a residency other use case scenarios that we envision could happen at these locations. So I wanted to ask you, are Andy's Market, which is a uh, commercial uh, you know, grocery store at um, TAM, Bell TAM, has its own dedicated under and at first level parking garage underneath the residential already. And they close the gate at eleven or whatever the operating times are of the Andy's, so it can't be used by the residents. Is that correct? And was that, how was that created? Was that through initial zoning or was that during the approval process? Could you speak?
That was through the approval process there. So there was a a hundred and eighty units built, uh, two hundred and ninety-five parking spaces, I believe. Um, with twenty, I want to say about twenty spaces specifically reserved for the retail establishment only. And so that's where that garage behind Andy's, the three thousand square foot Andy's grocery store. Actually, that's where the parking is for there. Um, and that's why they're able to close the gate now. Ultimately, it's property manager, you know, there, there's a relationship between the.
I've seen resident, my mother-in-law had to basically spend the night because she didn't know that that wasn't for the residents. So I think it's a very effective management strategy.
But but I think the scale size, also the, just for scale purposes, and what we talked about was three thousand to five thousand square feet required in the base of any project that would be developed at um, the Paradise Shopping Center. And so that's a three thousand square foot retail market, obviously, that sort of
Yeah.
Just so you can visualize it and understand what that means.
So I think another thing that I want, a refresh about traffic discussions with our residents was um, Bell TAM was initially challenged on its traffic impacts. It's a large facility, but like you said, in in the wash, it said that it wasn't. And lately, like a year ago, I think we actually got a long-term study of the traffic impacts. And could you talk to those? Because from my understanding, I thought it was that the traffic was either the same or reduced because there was funding from TAM that really changed the way the intersections worked and the way that we knew how better to work with traffic that was flowing through there. And so the impacts actually lessened over time through this development instead of increased. Is that? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. No, I, that's actually what what happened. We did a, we did a post occupancy analysis of Tam Ridge to understand exactly because of those concerns, what was the impact of that residential, a large residential project um, with some retail on the intersections. Um, there is a very small contribution of traffic just at the very morning and afternoons, as you might expect. Uh, to the surrounding intersection. Um, but overall, with the signal timing changes to the signals on Tamil Vista Boulevard, actually travel time reduced, with the exception, I think, of one, it is by a couple of seconds. And we're talking about a stretch of, you know, almost a half mile. Um, uh, through that intersection. Um, I think it was in the AM, I want to say AM. Period of time.
Yeah, so that's not because of TAM now, that's.
No, exactly. There's already.
Me from getting to.
No, and I think, I think that's a really important point to make is in, and we did look at I I want to say also, that didn't even include taking into account the existing traffic that was there previous with the prior use. It was like, we studied a vacant use that generated no traffic and then ju- studied the a hundred and eighty units and and the three thousand square foot of retail. So yeah, that was, I think, I mean, that's something that the planning department, I think, tries, wants to try to continue to do with as we 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 got to learn from projects, we got to get actual information and use that to sort of um, um, uh, communicate and also uh, educate our uh, you know, make make better decisions about about what changes to land use actually mean. And and I, we can, we do have to do the speculative.
Yeah, can we talk more in detail? Uh, so my question is, there's a process to the levels of development and 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 detail in which we look at these things, right? So the EIR is kind of a ROI, rough estimate of what the traffic impacts were. Just to say, it's okay to just even think about rezoning it, right? Then, once it's rezoned, if we maintain control within the town, a developer would have to come and provide a traffic report for a certain density or no?
Not necessarily. And and this is where, I mean, if it's consistent with the analysis that has been done, and again, it's, if we're talking SEQA, it's it's, it's really just a VMT analysis. It's a vehicle miles traveled analysis. And it's not level of service and time delay. So they would not have, if it's consistent with what has been studied in this this document before you tonight, they would not have to now.
So I guess I'm going to get into more land use questions because I I guess um, I heard really from the residents concerned, it was as much about the parking as it was traffic on the public roads. But these are private parking lots, right? And they're not even the same lots. My understanding from what I saw tonight was that the gym is its own private plot and owner and that the Nugget property is a property owner that and Nugget is leased from them and they they might share the the parking, but there is no actual control through zoning of what those parking requirements are for, say, the current use at that facility unless someone basically goes to uh, rebuild it or or modify it to a certain degree. And then they have to meet current code as far as parking standards. Is that what would happen? Or like, I know in this case, there was some special
Yeah.
things that you looked into, but.
No, I think, yeah, it was, it was approved when this redevelopment of the center happened in the late nineties. So whatever the parking's out there today is is perfectly fine.
Compliant.
Yeah.
But we couldn't reduce those compliant numbers, even if we like, basically, you can't take away parking unless the state mandated rules said you could anyway, right? Like, we're not going to take away parking or change the.
No, and in fact, well, I think, you know, there's, in fact, what we did as part of the sort of modifications to the zoning was to ensure that actually none of the existing parking areas or circulation areas would be impacted by new development at that site. So so in fact, what you'd be seeing would be ground level parking, you'd be adding spaces on the ground floor uh, of that potential redevelopment there.
I think that's important to share.
And and I, we did do an analysis of actually that, I mean, just you have fifteen thousand square foot fitness center today and just using basic traffic engineering numbers. Again, we're not getting into, we're not getting into a specific report here. But if if that was changed, you're you're looking at the existing use generates twenty AM peak trips, fifty-two PM peak vehicle trips. And obviously, gyms have have trips throughout the day, three hundred fifty-seven total vehicle trips during a weekday for the gym. Proposed would generate twenty-two vehicle trips during the AM peak. That's two more, thirty-nine vehicle trips during the PM peak, twenty-four percent decrease. And a total of maybe about eight trips during the more during the weekday, a three percent increase from existing conditions.
Okay, so it's either, it's either less than or very.
And that's analyzing, you know, uh, four thousand square foot retail as well. So I these are, these are again, but based on, these are traffic engineering analysis. This is basically ITE engineering standards.
Industry standards that from traffic engineers. Um, okay, and then uh, just I know you said our timeline, we've worked on this for two years, right? We have a whole bevy of consultants and everything. I'm wondering what the uh, uh, general ROI of investment the town has made in this process and why it might be critical for us to approve it in a timely manner to meet our goals as a town. How, do you have any kind of broad sense of how much we've invested? And time and money, maybe just money at the.
Yeah, you know, I I I think we originally uh, came to the council with a contract in the four hundred thousand to four fifty thousand range for consultant contracts. You know, so um, but I think it's more important is just the consequences of acting in a timely fashion, really.
Had to review those and approve that contract. So I thought it was very important when I did that.
Yeah.
Its results are very.
And I can tell you, we've got, yeah, I think um, you know, I, we've, our, our consultants work with a variety of different jurisdictions. They're not just working, you know, but I I think we've heard from multiple times that I think, you know, our process and then what we've been going through and and the way that we've developed our strategy and and the outreach to what we've done is 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 ahead of where a lot of other cities and jurisdictions are.
And and from a, can I ask that a little bit? So, you know, it, was it just the objectives, the design standards, or also some of these development standards that you shared within the twenty-two municipalities of Moran and the county? Like, was any of this process? Um, did we use some of the same consultants and they're tied together in a bigger strategic like goal, either for the town by just being aware of them and moving the zoning to conform with, you know, our understandings of different uh, you know, objective design standards and that.
Yeah, I think through the last few years, we've certainly learned a lot about how to create some better development standards that are certain, certainly going to produce more predictable development that is in line with sort of best practices. Um, you know, I can't say that it's, these are larger buildings than sort of some of the air surrounding areas. Uh, it uh, that we're used to, but I think it's sort of in the context of Tam Ridge and and St. Clement, their apartment buildings. I mean, that's what they are, you know, that it's, it is what it is. So, but um, but yeah, we we've used shared consultants. Uh, we've been very efficient with sort of sharing resources where we can. Um, so our whole affirmatively furthering fair housing uh, analysis, which is an huge amount of work, and I think was, I don't know how many pages of our back of our housing element that was done in coordination with the county and other jurisdictions as well. Um, there have been grants, funds coming in as well to support our work. Um, uh, but we've, yeah, I think, you know, I I think what, one of the things to recognize is that every one of these sites already allows housing on on those properties. So um, and the development standards that we have currently aren't as you nearly, maybe with the exception of Tamil Vista with the the theater, because we we did that in two thousand sixteen, but the rest of them just do not have development standards that are really.
Uh, so what I'm hearing is you're about to confirm that you feel that through this process, even though the density might have increased the protections in which we've gone through for objective design standards and and these development standards will better protect and create better housing stock and experience for residents. Um, yeah. So I think that's important to say on the record. So I think uh, Fred had a few more questions based on.
These are real quick. There was the four hundred thousand plus or minus in the contract with consultant. Just a really rough high level, I just, how many staff hours were spent on this, which is more of a soft cost because it's embedded in your salary? She and I, she's already laughing, the attorney, and it's already laughing. And again, I I just want people to understand that it's not just us paying consultants to come in and do all this work. But there was a lot of staff time between the two of you and Rebecca, Lorraine, the attorneys. Just a rough number. Don't say countless. Just put it in perspective, Adam.
You want my current salary? Just hours.
I, the hours, I mean,
hundreds of hour. I don't, I don't know of. I.
How how big on the staffing, uh, under the strategic plan of the last two years?
Probably seventy percent, fifty to seventy percent of Martha's time over the last year and a half, I would say. Um, myself, I would, I would put it at a good, I don't know, twenty percent of my time. Um, it goes on and on. And I know we've had a lot of work on this. Um, so.
So that being said, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate. And one other follow-up question to what Eli was talking about before, because I like using examples. In this current housing, we have one eleven Lucky Drive, just twenty-five units. If that does not get built during this housing element, the next housing element after, I mean, we had this after this one, we could not include that in a future housing element.
No, we could. It's just that we wouldn't have our designer review process available to us. And and another thing to note, we don't, we have no idea what the numbers are going to be.
Twice again.
Right, in eight years. It could be, we were seventy-two eight years, uh, yeah, eight years ago, seventy-two units total, or seven twenty-five now. It seems to be this whiplash, you know, you get the pushback at the at the state and then legislature and then it 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 whips back and forth. I imagine my guess would be we'd be somewhere in the middle, but I don't know where that is.
So what do you mean by new design review?
So it means that much like accessory dwelling units, that it's a, an application is made to the town to build a project and it comes to the planning staff, we review it to make sure that it actually complies with the actual regulations in place and meets the density and so on and so forth. We we theoretically could have a public viewing of a project. There's just no ability to have a discretion over, we don't give them a permit at the end of the day and say you've met our, our discretionary findings that it, it looks great and so on and so forth. It's just, it's it's checked off, approved or not.
Okay, so there's no planning commission, no design review through that process?
Exactly, exactly. I mean, you know, it, like I said, it could be that we could theoretically have a viewing of the project at a planning commission meeting. But it's not really, you're not really having the planning commission act on it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, uh, any more questions?
So how many sites are there? This is a terrible question, but anyway. How many sites from the last cycle? And I might have asked you this, but anyway, were not approved or were not built and that would now be under that ministerial approval process? were not approved or were not built, and that would now be under that ministerial approval process?
Yeah, no, so that was a new law that just came into effect within the last three years about how you can reuse, or, you know, what happens if you reuse sites, so that's, that's a new law.
But, and also, we, because of Beltam, we met our number, so we wouldn't have been eligible for, um, that anyway.
So we were actually s- sort of unexpectedly, uh, strategic in our last housing element. Christine was also, who also worked with us on that one, but we stripped away all the excess sites last time around to meet our arena, and we just said, why are we including these as opportunity sites, let's just do what we need to do to meet the arena, and basically there were like three sites, it was Tam Ridge, it was the enclave on Casa Buena, which I talked about being developed, and Robin Drive, and, and Warnham, uh, the, near the Sandor Market Trail was in there as well, which we've gotten, we haven't included in this, we've sort of removed that as a sort of an unrealistic um, housing site, so. So we sort of just narrowed it down to really what you needed, and those have actually been developed, and there's no, there's no excess, but that's a new state law as well, that wasn't even around, but I guess we anticipated the state law coming into.
Smart.
Yeah.
Patricia, given all the good communication, is there any questions that have popped up that you now wanna clarify?
Uh, you know, just one, if I could, thank you, uh, mayor. If, if Adam could just address, you know, I know we're not answering all of the concerns in those one hundred and eighty emails, but nonetheless, we all appreciate, uh, that input. Can you just explain how residents moving forward can make sure that their concerns are taken into consideration, uh, when and if, uh, any of these housing projects come along? Just a reassurance, if you can, of
Yeah.
that they still have some power here?
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, I mentioned this a couple of times, one of the reasons why we're trying to move forward with these rezonings is that's so that we have our public hearing processes that we're all accustomed to coming and talking about projects and how they could be improved and be better, um, and so we have no applications for any housing on any of these sites at this point, um, um, I, you know, I think we, we should expect, though, that some of these sites may get developed with housing in the, in the relatively near term. I mean, I'm talking, we're talking years, but, but nonetheless, at those points in times, we now have, if we move forward, we have the ability to do all the improvements to our public noticing that we've had. Uh, we've done over the last several years through our planning, uh, department, um, work, and we've um, uh, theoretically could have workshops and the, you know, et cetera, et cetera, knowing that a private housing developer would need to go through and get the approval process that the town currently has through its planning commission. It likely would be a planning commission level decision. Um, but there are plenty of opportunities that, um, once we get an application, as there is today for comment and review on a project, I will say, you know, Housing Account, Accountability Act by the state does not, wouldn't, wouldn't allow us, if the density allows a certain number of units, you can't say no, deny it. Um, but you can actually make comments that a, you know, a most, you know, that a developer who wants to work with our community, which we, we, I think those are uh, um, important people to bring into our community, um, and if we have policies that encourage good thoughtful development and that supports, uh, good projects and housing, um, we're more likely to get people who want to uh, work with us, and so I think that's, um, I think, anything else, Martha, you wanna add to that?
Oh, sure.
Yep, if anyone's not on the news, the, the Weekly Chronicle, sign up to get notifications and all big projects are included in those weekly newsletters.
How you sign up?
Thank you, thank you both.
You go to the website and there's a pop-up and you can add your email address and you'll be notified weekly.
Okay, uh, Pat, are you, you good?
All good.
All right, uh, anyone else on the council have any more questions? Okay, so at this time, I'll close, uh, council questions and I'll open it up to public, uh, statements. So you'll have three minutes, um, to say anything that you would like, um, in, in here, you can step up to the podium, please state your name and residents and then, um, or not, just not, you don't have to state your name? No, okay, uh, that, on planning commission, we used to, um, but the, okay, so you can just, uh, uh, speak three minutes if you'd like, and then also we have people online that will take, do we wanna take people in person first? Okay.
First of all, can we take a vote on?
Uh, no, we, sorry, yeah, it's fair.
A timer. Yikes, you, you put a timer on, you're good, anyway. Uh, to you, uh, I'm a resident, I own a home over on the, uh, uh, east side for about the past twenty-five, thirty years. And a couple of things I heard tonight is that we really want to, uh, address or, uh, not satisfy, but take into consideration the residents. Uh, I'm a member of the gym, I shop at the Nugget just about every day or every other day. There's nobody that I shop with or the employees or the management at the Nugget that thinks this is a good idea, no, the residents I have or, uh, the people in the gym, they have leases, so they're obligated no matter what. Uh, but we've got three schools over there, got, uh, Marin Country Day, Montessori, and the school, the, uh, co-school. So the traffic right now is not like it was when it was Uncle Charlie's, you know, uh, but it's, uh, I think it is an inconvenience, and I think there are other sites, uh, that what I heard of tonight, and you folks have obviously spent a lot of money on that, but what I'm gathering also is that it seems like it might be a done deal that you're gonna put it here, which is probably the most, uh, uh, commercial or in-use traffic, uh, shopping, that's our community. And, uh, it's important to us. And as I say, there's nobody in our community, and I've been over there twenty-five, thirty years, that are really happy about this. And everybody mentions these other sites for, say, perhaps, uh, housing, which we all know and agree we have to comply with. So that's my point, I know that, I know there's a lot of investment in this, and we all want it, you know, this is our community, and we want to, you know, do what we're supposed to do, but I, again, I might ask, does anybody on the board, uh, live over on the east side of the Paradise? Okay, good, good, terrific, so you know what I'm talking about, you know, and, uh, so that's that, and, uh, I speak for the, uh, two hundred letters and the five hundred signatures and the whole community, uh, that these other sites, I don't know if we spent four hundred thousand dollars on all the sites or just four hundred thousand dollars on that site, you know? That wasn't really clear to me, I might have missed something, but, uh, you know, it just seems like there's other places, I've been here for a long time, and that those other folks and places that, that, uh, I know of, uh, seem a lot more adaptable to a project like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else?
Hubble to the mic, uh, I'm Pete Turner, I've actually lived over in, uh, East Cordera for twenty-five years now, raised a family over there, and, uh, I, just to reiterate some of the things that, that Steve has said, I mean, I think that gym has been there for twenty-five years in some form, it was World Gym, and then it became Five Points. It's, it's really a vital part of the community, it's, it's where I think a lot of people, uh, are, we have an older cohort in our community that really see that as a very important meeting place. I think now I've seen a demographic change there where there's a lot of young kids, and it's, it's just got a lot of energy, that's not a business that's tired. One of the things I saw on the screen was sort of, one of our objectives is to maybe take space, commercial space that is not being utilized effectively and say, how can we kind of up our game a little bit? Maybe bring in some, some better commercial uses or whatnot, I really don't think that site checks that box, I think, and then the Nugget, my gosh, that shit, that was a game changer, for those of us living on that side of the freeway, that anything that would jeopardize that business and, and the success of that business, I think is where we have concerns. I was glad to hear, like, I think we absolutely need to build more housing. I think the thoroughness of this project is impressive, I, the data that you, you know, referred to about parking, I think, is, is helpful to hear. But, you know, when I saw up here, uh, under the standards, one of the things that jumped out at me was, one of the standards was parking of one and a half spaces, I think, per unit, and the developers got that reduced to one. And I thought, okay, that's a, a third reduction in parking. Why? I mean, when parking is such a concern at that location, uh, why would we, why would we allow that? And, and I think also, it's just, yeah, again, I've, I've lived in, in a number of communities around the Bay Area. You know, this idea that, that families can get by with one car in one unit, I just don't see it, I see more people coming, and unless we're gonna really change the parking environment there, I don't know how you're gonna say, well, gee, that, is that car here for the Nugget? Or is it here because they've got a friend in the unit and they're, they're taking up space, so. I'm blabbering on, but I, again, I do think we need to meet this requirement, absolutely, if this is the only property that we can do to fit that, great, I just hope that we can look at other properties and say, okay, they're not getting the kind of pushback that we are here for a very important reason, that this is just, again, an area where we're all very anxious about losing something that we value very much, so, thank you.
Uh, next to the podium.
Hi, I hope you don't mind me reading my notes here, so I don't fumble in what I want to say. But thank you, council members, mayor, good evening, community members. Preserving the character of the features of Cordera that make living here delightful is essential. Our parks, climate, and geography are immense blessings. It is also the people and businesses that are valuable, not the franchises, non-franchise businesses are more connected to the people and the surrounding community. Think of the people here and the businesses in Cordera that are unique. To me, that's the Nugget Market, and it's one of the most precious resources, and if you aren't shopping there now, please visit. I think you will find the stark contrast alarming between the quality of the employees and the produce between Safeway and Nugget. It is, the, the, the contrast, it, it's stark and it's alarming, it's, there's a huge disconnect with the community. The quality of the food at Nugget is just some of the best. We need to do everything in our power to support Nugget to thrive and be the best that they can be so that they in turn can do the same for us, to help us thrive. I came here tonight because I am extremely distressed that you would consider any action that would harm this business. Developing site number two at fifty-six forty Paradise Drive would have a very negative impact on this business. I saw nothing in your reports that I have read about the impact of parking surrounding this business. Under the market's current status, the parking lot can be full due to use of the gym and the senior housing development next door. Nugget Market has made it very clear in their letter to you that they would have insufficient parking to continue operating. I will repeat this because I have immediately observed the same problem with this development proposal. Nugget Market has made it very clear in their letter to you that they would have insufficient parking to continue operating. Furthermore, it fronts a busy street where there is a moderately high rate of speed relative to true residential corridors. That is a factor that needs to be taken into account because this can result in an increase in accidents on that street. Twenty-five housing units is the number of units, I believe, maybe it's a little more. But the number of units anticipated under this current housing development plan is not that significant. We're talking about two percent of the total number of units under this development plan. That is not a big enough gain for the loss of this incredible business that improves the life of our community, nor the cost with increased risk to safety. Thank you for considering these comments, thank you.
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone, my name is James Geimer. Um, I'm from Chicago, I've been in Marin for six years, lived in Mill Valley for five and moved into the apartment building we've been talking about across the street for about nine months. Uh, first of all, I want to commend everyone on the city staff and council for endeavoring to make these changes that sound like you're actually advocating for new development and changes that will enhance housing and the community in the way that all these different linkages come together. I've been a developer since the early nineteen nineties, working mostly for other development companies and doing some other projects for myself, but specializing in mid-rise apartment buildings all around the country for different firms. And they all included some type of an affordable housing, so it's something, as a developer, I still highly advocate for, we need housing for everybody. And the efforts you're taking will help solve some of those, those endeavors. Um, I just wanna have a, a couple of responses, I think, if you can get all of this accomplished the way I've read in the flyers that have come in the mail, uh, it will be a significant positive change to, uh, really all of Marin County, but especially Southern Marin. I wanted to, um, say that I think we do have some wonderful tenants in the area, and now I, I know Mill Valley and Cordera fairly well. And you're absolutely right about the Nugget, it's a gem of a store, and the gym, I'm not as familiar with, but I'm assuming it's, it's very nice. But tenants can fit into many different places, they can go to places that will have, imagine a thousand people who could walk to the gym, I'm sorry, to the Nugget, uh, every day or every week and get a lot of foot traffic. Imagine places where, uh, the gym becomes a walkable, uh, effort instead of having to drive there, and then parking wouldn't be such an issue. And the next thing I'd mention is that I've seen plenty of developments, either ones I worked on personally or from other developers who have been able to put groceries at the first floor, the parking for that grocery store on the second level, or below grade, which we wouldn't do here, and have enough room to go an extra floor vertical and solve all of those problems. The problems that I've heard mentioned tonight with the parking on these two tenants, uh, they're entirely solvable, they're not, they're not gonna stop anything. And so what I would say is keep that open mind, that you're worried about, you're worried about, you're endeavoring to make the community as a whole grow into a more established and functional and well-loved, walkable environment. Let's not base that upon a couple of leases who have been, and tenants who have been friendly to us, they can stay and they can do better when they find another facility if they need to, and, um, I think the, uh, I think that's the last thing I had to say, and that's all I'll say tonight, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is anyone else in, in the room that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Peter Chase, um, I just felt it needed to be said, a few things about this effort by staff and, uh, everybody involved in this thing, uh, is a commendation of what they put together. I did that calculation myself, and I figured that there's probably well over three thousand hours put into this effort by staff, um, it's rather incredible, the fact is that their efforts are so admirable, so full of integrity, and so full of just, uh, you know, awareness and being a part of the community, it's, it's incredibly admirable that they've done it in the way that they have. It has upped the game for Cordera, it has upped the awareness of people around the community. I think it is a model, as Adam says, for reaching out and, and, uh, making people aware. It would be, you'd be living under a rock if you didn't know about these, uh, changes to zoning and so forth at this point in the town, um, it's, it's great. So I think that they've listened, they've heard the, the comments about the Nugget, they've incorporated that into their plan. Um, the fact is that none of this may get built. Nothing could happen, it could just sit here, the market is not great, I'm seeing it, and, uh, I don't see a lot of development about ready to occur. But this is what the state requires, this is what they've done, they've fulfilled their obligation, they've done a fantastic job, and it's really a model for other communities to look at. Um, it should be, uh, they should be commended for this, and I think they've done just remarkable effort, so, um, we're not gonna, uh, be in a suffering uh, community rage from this effort, it's gonna be something we're proud of, and it's gonna be something that's gonna enhance. uh, community rage from this effort. It's going to be something we're proud of, and it's going to be something that's going to enhance the community as a whole. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Anyone else uh, that would like to speak?
Uh, Kim Baez, um, two thirty-three Prince Royal Drive. Uh, I remember when uh, I was eighteen, my mom bought a house um, also on Prince Royal Drive. I fell in love with the neighborhood. I remember her fretting, where am I going to get forty-two thousand to pay for this? And um, love the community. One of the beautiful things about it is the walkability. Fred knows walkability. And that's, we need to keep that, having Nugget Market, the dry cleaners, uh, and definitely Five Points. Uh, the gym, Five Points, is not only a workout place, but as our community ages, it's also a physical therapy place that some of us can walk to and we don't have to travel. If Nugget goes away, the Safeway parking lot, not only will we not shop there for the most part, you know, we would, I'd drive to Sandra Fall Whole Foods before I shop at Safeway. Safeway can't handle the increased traffic in business. Um, and again, the Five Points Gym, Nugget Market is a community, and to to lose any portion of that takes away a big part of the community. Uh, somebody said, well, it'll lower the value of our homes. It'll lower the, to have them go away, forget the value of the homes, those will continue to climb, but it'll lower the value of our community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing any last takers? No. Okay, uh, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
Yes, first off, we have Barbara Solomon.
I'm sorry, I didn't know I was up, but thank you. I just want to say, Adam Wolf and Martha Battaglia have done an amazing job with this process. You guys, everybody who lives in this community should be like bowing down to them because they've done such a good job. So I mean, this, this is a very difficult process to go through. The state imposed these unrealistic expectations and Adam and Martha followed through and somehow obeyed all the things they were supposed to do and came up with this plan. And I just like, we have to bow down to them. They are amazing. But anyway, so Adam and I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you.
President.
Okay, next, we have Suzie Beatty.
Suzie, you should be.
There it is. Hi, I was just getting unmuted. You can hear me now? Hi, everybody. Um, are you busy bowing down? I'm sort of bowing, bowing down also because I was one of those, oh, I I live in East Corte Madera, as most of you know. Um, so I do happen to be an East Corte Madera person who is in support of uh, this entire thing. Um, I was Fred. I was one of the one hundred and eighty comments and uh, did write in concern about the parking spaces uh, available to the Nugget. Uh, as we all know, that market is gold to our community, particularly the east side. And I do think the town needs to do every single thing possible for their success, and they need to stay there. I think they will. I think these people who are concerned uh, haven't maybe heard every single thing that has just happened recently, which is there has been negotiation, uh, as Adam was saying, and thank you so much uh, between uh, the town and the Nugget. I mean, I'm so proud of this town for taking a step forward and doing these things right, and uh, it's true that the work that uh, Martha and their team has done has been amazing. I appreciate the communication. Uh, it's been incredible. I've looked and I've been kind of seeing what other towns are doing, Mill Valley and others that in regard to this housing element, and it is, uh, it's just amazing how well our town is doing. So um, I really hope that that everything is going to work out with the parking situation there. I'm not as concerned about traffic as I am where cars park in that lot. If we allow enough space for everybody to be there, uh, and it needs to be, you know, it needs to be done right. Um, I will be in in support of this. So you can take my uh, comment and put that number down a little bit lower to those who are concerned. And uh, really, you who are concerned, really pay attention and listen because uh, a lot of things have been solved and mitigated. I think the gym's going to be okay. Uh, remember that those regulations have been there already. So anyway, that's all, you guys. Thank you so much. And um, I appreciate the work of every single one of you, and thank you for looking out for our community. That's all.
Okay, next up, we have Riley Hurd.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Riley Hurd. I am a local end-use attorney. And I specialize in Marin County. I represent developers. Um, I do projects. I use the state laws, the housing element, waivers, concessions. Um, so I bring a bit of a unique perspective uh, to this evening. Um, and I also am bringing the perspective of being involved in or monitoring nearly every jurisdiction's housing element in the county of Marin, and that's twelve when you count um, Marin County. And I can say without a doubt, not to get repetitive here, but at at least I'm coming from a different angle of comparison that what Adam and Martha have done for your town um, is just heads above um, what I'm seeing in in other jurisdictions and you're, I I think, really just lucky to to have these folks in your department. So I I think that needs to be said again. Um, want to make a couple of comments. Uh, you know, I don't love what the state has done here because it's making discussions like the Nugget Market happen, right? Um, but uh, this is where the rubber hits the road from us not producing housing over the years and having eight-year processes to to build something. So, you know, we're paying the piper, but um, what it really highlights is that when you have a central site, a cornerstone site that's carrying the water for your density, you gotta make it work, right? So in this case, it's your Macy's, um, maybe a couple others. So what has occurred is, um, you know, the heights, the setbacks, the rules, they've all been carefully considered to accommodate the density that you need because for the very first time, we find ourselves having punishments, if you will, if we don't produce, right? Loss of local control, SB thirty-five. I'm using them in other places, and and you don't want to be there. So um, I just want to say, as proposed, these standards look really doable, really workable. I know the heights might be um, a little different than what you've seen before, but it's pretty limited. And what you don't want to do is force developers into waivers and concessions and state law um, scenarios. So uh, I say, go with what's proposed. Great job, and thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have um, Stacy Weeks.
Thank you. First off, thank you very much, council. Um, it's a tough job that you all do. Trust me, I know. Very appreciative of everything that you all do. Um, it's tough. We're all in favor of um, housing. We need it. We understand the requirements. However, and we love the Nugget, there's no question at all. Um, huge part rallied the troops with regard to the Nugget, with regard to Five Points. It's unfathomable for me to think that we would even consider taking away anything from that area because of the environmental. We, I live in that area knowing what we deal with as uh, Madera del Presidio, as a community there. A huge supportive community. But what is the impact that it's going to do to the traffic for our school districts? Uh, I believe Steve or someone had mentioned, we've got three schools, Montessori Cove. Um, and I forget the other one. Pete also said the same, you know, thing. Very similar. Traffic is a concern. The traffic lights right now, yes, that maybe they do accommodate to the school timing. However, just walking around in the area at that time, traffic is horrific. And where are the property owners? You know, we know we have the support and we support Nugget and them as a lessor, Five Points as a lessor, the cleaners as a lessor. Where are the property owners in this? When does the town get the property owners involved? We know that y'all don't negotiate, you know, and and communicate. Uh, you're communicating with the lessor, but at what point are you all talking to the property? They're the, they're the big impactor, right? So it seems like, you know, yeah, we've got to meet the commercial end as well as the housing end, but you you know, what we've got other areas that we could look at. It just seems that the area, the Nugget, Five Points, you know, we've got a a housing area, these projects, they come to fruition, we get rezoning, we get, okay, it's got to be commercial, it's going to go to our school teachers, low income, and then the rug gets pulled out from under us. So thank you. You all have done a great job, but let's really make sure, you know, where are the property owners in this whole process? And again, thanks, council members.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to have Valeria Sasser. Valeria, whenever you're ready.
Yes, I was, I was unmuted. Hi, everybody. I'm Valeria Sasser, a member of the Priorities Setting Committee, Affordable Housing, Marin County, and uh, representing Corte Madera, Greenberry, and Laxborough. And I would like to to um, remind, first of all, praise the staff for the great work done so far, as everybody already said here, engrossing that, my voice in that. And I would like to remind and please make note, everybody, that we we do not want to see what happened to Bell Mountain happening again in any of the future projects. Affordable housing must be provided in any of these projects that are going to be approved in Corte Madera for us to be uh, according to the state mandate. So make sure that whenever we are whatever of the sites we are used to build anything here in the future in our town, we are including those who need affordable housing and um, even our kids, let's think about that, or anytime we are talking about affordable housing. They have to move out because they cannot afford to live in our town. So this is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we're going to have Sebastian Jack Jakovic. Jakovic.
Sebastian, whenever. Can you guys hear me? Okay? Hello, everybody. My name is Sebastian Jakovics, and I um, did decide to raise my hand. I've been viewing the meeting. Uh, my family and I actually are one of the property owners. We own um, four of the properties that are consistent on uh, on some of the sites here. Uh, you might recognize them, SSF, Big Five Sporting Goods, um, uh, Chiropractic Center, along with uh, some office buildings. Uh, we actually have the lo- second largest site combined total for this. And I can say as a property owner that the town, Adam and staff have been very professional. Uh, they were very considerate. They actually asked us a lot of questions about our our feedback, our input. Uh, I found the process to be extremely uh, informative as a property owner. And we are developers in different um, cities around California. And I can tell you that most of our developments take seven to eight years to come to fruition. So having these rules laid out and anticipate us as a family on what we decide to ultimately do there is very important. Um, you know, people talk about other uses. We're looking at Fitness SF. We've actually owned and operated that gym for over thirty years. Uh, formerly Gold's Gym, so we have to take into consideration our existing operations as well and how we accommodate a very successful business into a development like this. So I anticipate that other successful businesses, whether they do the Nugget or Five Points, would have opportunities in other developments or their own development to remain a part of it and repai- remain supportive of the community as we are anticipating for ourselves. Um, and you have to also consider the cost of this. I mean, we're looking at a redevelopment project that will be well over one hundred million dollars to get housing and everything done. It's it's a big hassle. There's a lot of risk involved. And so the proper incentives and having everything laid out is an important consideration for somebody like us to take a look and do this. Uh, we do own all those properties, frame clear, so the easiest thing for us is to do nothing. Um, but that's not what the state is pushing here, and we're just sitting and watching it. And we just developed the office building with the new vet hospital servicing the community. Um, significant investments were made there, and it's taken a long time, a lot of process, a lot of agencies. So things do get complicated, and I must say, staff has done an amazing job on this. It's not oftentimes I could talk about a bureaucracy or a government agency in anywhere in California that does a great job, but they, Corte Madera has done that. And I think the council has uh, some good information to take a look at. So I appreciate your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up, we didn't have any more hands raised of individuals who have not spoken. So I'm going to read um, public comments that were submitted after the agenda was published. And I'll go ahead and time myself. We're going to start off with Emily Charlie. My name is Emily Charlie, and I live in East Corte Madera. I have two comments for consideration. The first is an acknowledgement of town staff for their efforts. Well over a year ago, town staff began reaching out to the community to get input and assistance in identifying appropriate locations to address housing needs. It can be hard to get public participation in a timely way, and it taxes a town's resources to shift gears late in development. And so I know town staff works hard to involve the public early. My second comment is about the locations themselves. The plans developed after seeking and receiving community feedback seem reasonable to me. Corte Madera is required to identify housing locations, and there are only so many possibilities from which to select. The location that will impact me the most is off Paradise, near the Nugget, where I seem to shop nearly every day. I understand parking might be harder, but finding housing is harder still. For my part, in support of additional housing, I'm willing to park a little further away, take a second lap around the parking lot, or carpool with another grocery grocery shopping friend. Thank you to town staff for their outreach, the council for taking up this issue, and the Corte Madera community, who I know will warmly welcome new residents, no matter where they are located. The next comment um, is from Susan and James Parker to the town council. We did not see our letter attach the agenda for tonight's meeting regarding the Corte Madera housing element specifically to parcel to Five Points Gym. Since our letter um, was written, we would have been told that the town has assured Nugget Market that the footprint of the proposed reasoning would be limited to the existing footprint of Five Points Gym, and no parking would be affected. This is great news for the market, but not for the gym. Our family of six have all frequented and or had memberships at Five Points at some point, and my youngest son works there. The gym is an asset to our side of town, as is the market. Rezoning would encourage the owners to cash out to a developer and take away the gym's benefit to East Corte Madera's residents. There is already housing located at the shopping center. We need services there, not additional housing. Removing established businesses do not improve East Corte Madera, but rather increases the need to drive over the freeway, adding to congested streets. We are sure there are other more appropriate locations to rezone to meet the state's mandates. Please remove Please remove the site of Five Points Gym for consideration for the proposed housing element. Thank you. Next, we have Tanya and Ralph Conqueror. Sorry if I, sorry in advance if I mispronounce any last names. And also for everyone watching, we do have these public comments uploaded to the website and they are hyperlinked on the agenda, which is in the agenda center of the website, if you'd like to read them for yourselves. Okay, Tanya and Ralph Conqueror. Dear Mayor Lee and Town Council, low-cost housing is certainly needed and necessary, but at what cost? And to what detriment to community services for so many on the east slash Bayside? The center at five, six, two, seven dash fifty-one Paradise Drive, which houses Five Points Gym, Nugget Market and Paradise Cleaners slash alterations, provides key service for east slash Bayside Corta Madera. It is the only center on the east and Bayside of Corta Madera with services for the community as well as a key social hub. Servicing a large local residence base in Corta Madera, Tiburon, surrounding businesses, a senior living community and an existing below-market housing complex on San Clemente Drive. It has grown to be a hub of activity for the community. Locals have come to depend on this center. It is a gathering place for the community. On any given day, you'll find people enjoying coffee or lunch at the many tables, standing around, talking and enjoying each other's company. It is the east slash Bayside's answer to the Corta Madera Plaza near Cafe Verde on the west side. Tearing down the gym and incorporating a large chunk of the parking that is already not enough parking as it is will drastically hurt the east slash Bayside of Corta Madera and could most likely cause Nugget to pull out of the area, leaving the east and Bayside of Corta Madera without a needed market, gym and cleaners. When is it okay to break or destroy thriving needed services and businesses that benefit a large residential community and business base for low-cost housing? It is not okay. In fact, you are breaking something that works and isn't broken to replace it. If the market closes, not only the current residents, businesses and seniors lose, but also the prospective residents of the low-cost housing. I respectfully ask that you consider one of the nine other sites that would be more fitting for this rezoning project. Some that are underutilized properties that won't destroy a vital needed center for so many. Rezoning the center is detrimental to the current residents and businesses that it serves as well as the city. Next, we have Azade Benham. This letter is in opposition to population increase in general on Paradise Shopping Center on the sites list in particular. According to the public information online, Corta Madera with more than ten thousand residents has had a two-point-five percent increase in population since twenty twenty, while Mill Valley, Sausalito, Tiburon and even Sarafell within its twenty-three miles have had minimal increases or even decrease in population during the same timeframe. Corta Madera is a town of four miles split in two by Highway one oh one and no central heart or a community square. We even recently lost our cinema, which sits idle and empty on the west side of Corta Madera. That's why our shopping malls are functioning well, semi-community centers. Functioning like semi-community centers, sorry. For those living on the eastern portion of the town, Paradise Shopping Center is the tiny local center of our community. We need our local market gym and dry cleaners within our walking distance. The town's assurances to Nugget about parking spaces available to them and the prospect of gaining more customers if the site is chosen has changed their initial opposition. But Nugget is a commercial entity, not a resident. Residents care about their quality of lives and their invested livelihoods in the town, which will be impacted by periodical increase in population. We already have San Clemente Place, Ages, Paradise Drives, existing rental units and those under construction. A good portion of the east Corta Madera is in flood zone. In the morning and afternoon, the traffic backs up to the self-storage building on San Clemente. Why we have never made a separate lane to turn right at that Tamil Pies driver's drive traffic light instead of being trapped among those turning left is beyond me. The need for affordable housing should not come before we improve the infrastructure to accommodate it. Piling up people and overwhelming our resources and residents is not the answer. Next, we have Dan Ayrn.
My twenty-nine years of living in Corta Madera has taught me many things. Community is real and it counts. The Nugget Market in East Corta Madera is a crucial part of our community. I shopped at Paradise Market and when Nugget went in, I continued and increased my shopping. Today, I do not know what I would do without the Nugget. It is part of my life and I cannot for one moment consider its departure. But that is what taking parking spots would lead to. Low-income housing is great and I support it. So my note to you is not against low-income housing. Rather, it is about taking any parking spaces away from the Nugget for any reason. During COVID's raging first chapter, the Nugget served the community with full staffing, relentless commitment to keep crucial supplies in stock and with a, we can do this together. The Nugget gave us hope and community during COVID. They did everything right. They provided community members with an anchor amidst the chaos we all were experiencing. Experiencing. If anything, they deserve more parking spaces just because of how they help many of us stay sane and supplied with necessities. Nugget is popular for residents in our twin cities, but also for folks in Tiburon, Mill Valley and Sarafell. I know this from friends who love going to the Nugget for the competitive prices, superior service and incredible offering of product. Parking right now can be difficult and to tear down Five Points and put in any enterprise that will increase the need for parking would be a dagger in the heart of Nugget and what they provide to our community. The Nugget Store is more than a grocery store. It provides tables and chairs for retirees to enjoy morning coffee. It is a rallying point for kids after school. It is a go-to for many families for their first choice of shopping. The Nugget embodies all that is good about living in a small town like I do. To take away parking from the Nugget means that they will lose customers. It is a horrible inevitability. Those of us who walk to the Nugget will continue to do so, but that remains a non-issue. What counts here is that if the Nugget were to lose parking, this community stands to lose an integral, dedicated, vital and cherished pillar. Please consider that the east side of Corta Madera at one point was, let's be honest, a bit unsavory in its business community. Paradise changed that and the Nugget has created all that one could want in a community, family-owned business. Removing parking spaces will start a horrible domino effect that I cannot imagine is attracted to our town leaders. One of the joys of living in the small town is that I believe that our leaders are dialed into what the community wants. I believe that. I know that you all have the best intentions, so I ask that you consider the very best thing for the community vice versa, taking parking from the Nugget. So in support of the Nugget, not threaten its business. Thank you for your time and consideration. Just in time.
Next, we have Vicky Van.
Hi, everyone, and Happy New Year. First of all, thank you for your service to our town. It is much appreciated. I am writing because I recently heard about the zoning for public housing next to Nugget Market. As much as I like public housing, I do think this construction would do harm to our community as it will involve parking problems, other moving parts, and my guess is that at least Five Points will have to go. I moved here twenty years ago and the grocery store was one of the primary reasons I selected Mariner Cove. It is not only our go-to place for food, but my son has worked there and it is a real community hub. Also, Five Points Fitness has been a second home for me, my husband and now my son. The cleaners and laundry round this out as a handy part of our lifestyle. Those three establishments are a real selling point for our neighborhood. I know this plan is already somewhat in progress. I ask that as a town council, you consider finding a way for this construction to happen elsewhere. I will also look for ways I can become involved in this pursuit by attending meetings, writing other letters, et cetera. I will look at the website for this, but if you know any ways I and my neighbors can get involved, please let me know. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Geneva Bump.
Hello, town council. I am writing on behalf of the ages living retirement community, Nugget Market and Paradise Shopping Center. It is my belief that rezoning that area to build housing would be a grave mistake. As it is, that area is congested and difficult to navigate, especially during peak commuting hours. Rebuilding with more housing would make accessing the grocery store nearly impossible and would create even more congestion of traffic to the residences beyond the shopping center. It is known that there are many other areas in Corta Madera that could be rezoned for more housing, including the giant parking lot across from the Nordstrom that is empty more often than not. This letter is my official signing of the ballot to remove the Paradise Shopping Center from the housing plan.
Next, we have the Sullivan, Susan, Richard, James and Amanda. We have read the revised proposal for the Paradise Shopping Center and still strongly object to it. We would like to see how a building could be built on the footprint of the gym that would include parking for thirty-three to sixty cars for the residential units, retail space, parking for the retail business and thirty-three housing units. It would have to be a multi-story building that will tower over the homes on Estrada Lane. How tall would this building be in order to fulfill the requirements stated above? The letter states that there are no current projected projects for this site. However, if a developer could build a retail space and thirty-three residential units, they would grab the chance. How would you prevent people from parking in the existing parking lot when they are going to the new retail space or the new residential units? Please carefully consider how this zoning change will negatively impact our neighborhood. Please remove this site from the proposal. Please include our comments in the minutes for the meeting. This is an opinion of four adults living at twenty El Camino Drive. Next, we have Jean Rizzo. Thank you for your prompt response and for the work you all did to engage with Nugget and the community regarding the concerns in pursuit of resolution. We look forward to the meeting and tracking the development over time. Next, we have Nick Lockwood. I reiterate, stop jamming housing into Corta Madera. There is obviously no reason to rezone that commercial space for housing. Plenty of businesses could fill the void if the gym does not want to remain. Paradise is already overcrowded with traffic and the parking lot is already a nightmare. The status quo will do just fine in this case. Maybe you guys should focus your efforts on improving the existing community's quality of life by adding turf fields to Town Park and Cove. Towns across California are adopting artificial turf facilities for the benefit of the community, children and the environment. This recent rainstorm should finally open leadership's eyes to the fact that grass fields do not work in today's boom and bust rain climate. How long will town fields be closed for this winter? Thank you for your consideration. Just a few more. Need some water? No, I got it. Thank you. Okay, next is Jenny and Jed Ritchie.
Dear council members, it has come to our attention that the town of Corta Madera is planning to rezone half of the shopping center to housing. This concerns us along with our neighbors for several reasons. The community would lose the only gym that is affordable in our area. I go to this gym every morning. I need it for my mental and physical well-being. I honestly do not know what I would do without it in our neighborhood. The Nugget provides jobs to countless individuals with families. Indeed, the staff at the Nugget have become like family to me and my own family. It seems counterintuitive to build moderate to low-income homes while also putting tens of tens, if not a hundred, people out of the work. Out of work, sorry. The Nugget has made it clear that if the parking lot is cut in half, business would go down and they would have to close. Building will have building will have a direct impact on the ages community. Again, it seems counterintuitive to build low-income homes at a place where it will negatively impact another vulnerable population. The noise and congestion of the building alone was, will certainly impact their quality of life, not to mention access for immediate medical attention. To be clear, I support low-income housing. However, I do not support building at this location. Considering how many open lots there are in this area, I have a hard time believing that the town cannot find a better place to meet their housing quota. By building at the proposed location, you will jeopardize thriving businesses that take care of our community's physical and mental health, the senior population and the jobs of honest and hardworking people at the Nugget. Thank you for taking the time to read this letter.
Next, we have Lynn Brenbon, Bren Ban, Bram Ban, sorry. My name is Lynn Graham Ban, forty-four Creek Site Court, Corta Madera. I have lived in Corta Madera twenty-one years. Please do not rezone the property on Paradise Drive adjacent to the Nugget Market for housing. If housing is built at that site, there would not be enough parking left available for use by Nugget Market for them to stay in business. Corta Madera would not only lose an excellent local business, it would result in a loss of jobs in the community. I would like the city council to be increasing, not cutting jobs in Corta Madera. According to an article in the IJ published on January sixth, twenty twenty-three, there are numerous other sites available to develop additional housing for the state mandate. I don't believe it is necessary to have the property near Nugget Market rezoned for housing since there are other options. Thank you for listening. Next, we have Glenda Corning.
Dear Corta Madera council members, I am writing to ask that you remove five, six, five, one Paradise from your list of potential housing sites in Corta Madera. The Nugget markets, the Nuggets market have been a boon for east Corta Madera and our whole community. It is the only upscale, high-quality food market available in Corta Madera and is heavily patronized. Over time, I've stopped shopping at Molly Stones and rely on Nuggets almost exclusively. I believe this is true of many of Corta Madera's citizens. Parking has gotten more difficult and I often have to circle the lots several times to find an available space. Reducing the lot size, which I understand would violate existing parking requirements for the store, would make the business extremely challenging to access and might might as well cause it to fail or seek a better location. Please do not take away the viability of this important community asset. I understand the priority need to create space for new housing, but feel that the other options you have listed are more suitable. Thank you for your consideration and thank you for sharing this correspondence with me. I am heartened that you were able to find a way to protect the viability of Nuggets Market while still providing additional housing for our townsfolk. This sense of thoughtful collaboration and respectful discourse is one of the many reasons I love our town. Thank you, Glenda. And she was referring to her comment that she submitted and then responded to what was sent out by Rebecca to everyone who submitted public comments before the publication of the agenda.
Next, we have Evelyn Lee.
Dear mayor and council members of the town of Corta Madera, your staff has identified five, six, five, one Paradise Drive and two town-owned parcels for potential rezoning for high-density residential development. The town council will consider development regulations for this and nine other sites for the purpose of increasing the number of residential units in Corta Madera. I oppose a rezoning or other designation of five, six, five, one Paradise Drive for residential use. That parcel should remain non-residential because its commercial activity is essential to maintaining the viability of the consumer-oriented retail cluster of businesses along that small stretch of Paradise Drive and the character of east Corta Madera. My name is Evelyn Lee. Our family moved to twenty-two Granada in nineteen sixty-two and still own our home there. Five, six, five, one Paradise Drive used to be the MB supermarket. The Nugget Market sits in the former Ace Hardware in the Paradise Drive Shopping Center with Gregory's Restaurant, a record store, fabric store, dry cleaners and other independently owned businesses. Retail use on Paradise Drive is part of our community. Converting Five Points Fitness, which has been there for at least fifteen years, makes other retail businesses such as the Nugget Market less attractive to shoppers and could lead to their failure. That would deprive east Corta Madera residents and visitors of a place to stop and shop and undermine our neighborhood identity.
In addition, the parcel under consideration is just east of the signal at San Clemente Road and Paradise Drive, where traffic tends to be congested. A denser usage pattern with the residential driveway leading to a primary artery, Paradise Drive, would duplicate the untenable congestion that we see along Sur Francis Drake. For these reasons, the zoning of five, six, five, one Paradise Drive should not change and should not be rezoned for high-density residential use. Next, we have Eric Svensson. To whom it may concern, please remove the Nugget Market slash Five Points Fitness site from the rezoning list. It is a commercial hub of the East Corder Madera Residential Neighborhood. It should be preserved as such. If the available parking is reduced at this site, its viability as a commercial center will be diminished. Nugget Market is a wonderful place to shop and Five Points Fitness is a terrific gym. Let's keep both of them in business. I'm not against an increase to moderate slash low-income housing, but a vibrant commercial center should not be destroyed in the process. There are other more suitable sites. Thank you. Next, we have Sheila and Michael Lagios. Hello, we are opposed to the rezoning of the Paradise Shopping Center to add housing units there. This is not an appropriate place for such development. Thank you. Halfway there. Just kidding, just kidding. Just wanted to see if everyone's still awake. Okay. Next, we have Laurel Wilson. Dear Corder Madera Town Council, I am writing to ask that you consider other locations than the Paradise Shopping Center for a proposed site for the required low-income housing. I'm not opposed to having the housing nearby, but don't want to give up the grocery store or gym and its adjacent parking as that center is a heart and hub for those of us who live in East Corder Madera. During the pandemic, I felt as though that was the one place I could go to feel connected and taken care of and continue to count on it as a on a daily basis. I recognize that this is a pressing problem for many of California's communities, including our own, but hope you will take our needs into consideration too. It would really change my life here. Thank you. And then we have Jill Jansen. Dear Corder Madera Town Council members, I am writing to express my dismay after hearing that you are seriously considering the Nugget location to build additional housing. Being a resident of East Corder Madera, I shop at Nugget almost every other day and feel fortunate that I don't have to drive over this overpass to Safeway to shop. Although Nugget is a convenient location for me to shop, it is not always easy to find parking and I think that building thirty-six units of housing that would require seventy-two parking spaces would make parking slash shopping at Nugget impossible and we would lose a valuable community resource that residents need. You also need to take into consideration the parking needs of the staff at Aegis. The old Granada School, which is underutilized and should probably be torn down anyway, would make a much better location option for new multi-unit housing and would allow for many more homes than thirty-six to be built without the impact on an essential neighborhood business. Thank you. Next, we have Jeffrey Ida. My name is Jeffrey Ida and I own a home in Mariners Cove. My family shops at the Nugget Market at Paradise Shopping Center and I understand that there is a proposal to rezone half of the shopping center to housing that will directly impact parking. I'm emailing today to request that this area is not rezoned. I shop with two kids that are pulled out of car seats on both sides of the car. I'm always concerned about my kids' safety due to the limited amount of parking spaces and the size of the parking spaces. Reducing parking spaces will increase the competition for spaces and increase the likelihood of an accident in this already tight parking area. Sincerely, Jeffrey Ida. And then lastly, we have a comment that was, it's the same comment and when it was submitted by the following individuals. Nicole and Virgil Caselli, Lisa and David Klein, Brian Stone, Stephanie Chen, Dita Papraniku, Bruce and Robin Cohen, Frank Carlo, and Steven Matty Morgan. And I'm gonna go ahead and read the comment. This was sent to Mayor Casissa. We are writing to express our strong opposition to the rezoning of the Paradise Shopping Center parcel, which will negatively impact our community in East Corder Madera and the surrounding area. The elimination of important businesses and parking that serve the residents would be detrimental to our community. Please understand that we support increased low-to-modern income housing in Corder Madera for families in need. However, it must be done in areas that can sustain it. East Corder Madera is already taxed with extensive traffic, especially during the school hours that affects commuters and the elderly community at Aegis Senior Living. The development of San Clemente Place, an affordable seventy-night unit apartment complex built just thirteen years ago, has added to this traffic bottleneck. And now the town is considering the Paradise Shopping Center parcel for developing yet another thirty-eight unit low-income apartments on the same street, less than a mile away. Most importantly, Paradise Shopping Center comprised of the Nugget, Paradise Cleaners, and Five Points Gym is a dynamic community place. It is a place where people engage with their neighbors and interact with community members. Whether on foot, on bike, or by car, people of all ages come to utilize the businesses. They also meet others, hang out, and enjoy the overall ambience, creating the heart and soul of our East Corder Madera community for a community with few public spaces. This center is a de facto civic square in the broader sense of the term, a place where people of diverse ages, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds come to shop, meet, and mingle. If rezoning efforts proceed for this parcel, it will hurt our community. There are there are other more appropriate locations in Corder Madera in your rezoning list, which are more suitable. Please consider those options and remove the Paradise Shopping Center from the rezoning list. And that was our last comment and then I'll just refresh the email. And we do not have any additional public comment.
Hands, no other hands.
And let me just check. We do not have any other hands raised.
If I, if I may, and I don't want to extend this longer, but I do think it's important, given the comments, just to respond to by reading. I know, I think there were some representatives of the Nugget on the call, but I don't believe they have their hands up. So I do want to read from their letter specifically. A and not the whole thing, but I will.
Adam, can you clarify how this letter came about and the meeting and specifics for some of the residents that might not be
Sure, yeah, so
kind of engagement.
So my understanding is over the holidays, there was a petition that was sent out by the Nugget Market or there was actually an email that was sent out to all their customers and client list expressing their concern about parking in particular at the Nugget and expressing their, that that individual signed a petition opposing and let the town council know that they oppose the rezoning of again, the, I forget the specific address, fifty, where the Five Point Fitness Gym is and the two town-owned parcels. After the New Year and coming back the week of the New Year, we immediately tried, actually, we had a scheduled meeting with them from before the holidays to sit down and discuss the concerns and got to actually meet with leadership there. The CEO, CFO, and the attorney representing the Nugget Market.
For my own interest, do you know how large the Nugget, the Nugget Corporation is, even though it's family-owned? It's not
I don't, it's they're out of Davis, Davis, California, and they have many, many stores throughout California. I don't know how many exactly. But nonetheless, so we, we met via Zoom virtually. I'd had several, a couple of meetings over the course of that first week and I had follow-up phone calls and whatnot and like I said before, appreciated the Nugget coming forward. We had good conversations and ultimately came to some modifications of the zoning ordinance that would actually ultimately resulted in addressing the parking concerns that they had. And they responded by sending a letter back out to their email customer email list and client list and also thankfully, they also you know, tried to put, I think did a good job of trying to get the word out as well as they could, putting stuffing this letter into grocery bags as my understanding as well. But I think I just read, so they listed several of the modifications to the zoning that occurred. And then after that, the paragraph that I think is really most relevant, given some of the comments we just heard is that says, "We believe these restrictions will support the continued vibrancy of the Paradise Shopping Center and provide Nugget Market with the best opportunity to continue serving the Corder Madera community for the long term. We would like to thank the town for their willingness to address our concerns and are supportive of the planning process moving ahead, which is inclusive of the changes noted above." So I think certainly parking concerns, which was paramount to their business interests at Paradise Shopping Center and really the overall vibrancy of the center. Those concerns were addressed and they stated as much in their letter. So I think I just want to make sure that's clear that the Nugget Market themselves feel very comfortable with their long-term success at the Paradise Shopping Center and have no concerns about continuing to do business there and serving our community.
And Mayor, if I may, it is past nine thirty and we do have to have a motion to extend the meeting an additional thirty minutes.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion and then a vote to extend the meeting.
Okay, and make the motion to stay until ten o'clock.
Second. We have to vote or is it just
Yes, Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
House Member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, with that, I'll close public comment and open it back up to the council to share and discuss everything that we need to do. So my question is, I think that, you know, if, if basically the council would like to discuss a resolution on number two or number three, because they're tied together, that we maybe we move forward with one, but if we can limit the discussion and get it within the half an hour, then we could maybe make a motion to approve all three. State, depending on the discussion. If the discussion goes long, I would like to at least move one forward because I don't know that the EIR is attached to the other two. If there's more, if, if it's like
Excuse me, Mayor Lee, if I may, at, if the discussion continues past ten PM, at ten PM, you would take a vote to extend till ten thirty and it needs to be a unanimous vote to extend till ten thirty and then the meeting must end at ten thirty.
Okay, just from a technical standpoint, the secret document must be actually certified in order to adopt the other, or actually in order to adopt certainly the, the general plan land use resolution. Well, it's introduced introduction, it's introduction of the ordinance. Yeah, we prefer Okay, so Rosa, did you have any last thoughts or statements you wanted to share with the residents or the council?
Well, you know, perhaps I just want to say to the residents that back when the Paradise Shopping Center was approved, I was on the planning commission. And it was a time that, you know, we were in the parking lot. At that time, we had problems getting the shared parking agreement signed between all the owners. And I was out there with moms, I had little kids and other people had little kids in strollers carrying signs saying, "Share our parking" or "Paradise is a parking lot" because we needed it to get it going, to get it through. And so, of course, there's a special place in my heart for Paradise. It was something that Mariner Cove especially, and also over in Marina Estates, Liz Craco and her family were really, really instrumental in moving that forward. And there were many, the hearings for that were so big that they had to be in the gym of what was then the Lycée Français, which is now the Cove School. So I understand that it was very hard, one, to, to convert, to see this conversion happen to the shopping center. And it is a great hub for folks, but I also want to to know, you know, to note that needs change and we have to evolve with the needs of our community and there, there are many needs. And you know, what I'm hearing is that we can mitigate, we can adjust, we, people are very adaptable. And whatever issues may arise with applications that come before us, we, we can face those, we can deal with those and the public will be involved and we want to preserve that opportunity for the public to be involved with this next phase, whatever that might be, if there is a next phase, as much as they were involved with the previous change and the previous change. So I think it's important that everybody, you know, be aware of all of the pieces of this and stay engaged throughout the process.
Great, thank you, Rosa. Pat, would you like to share?
Thank you so much. For all of the reasons noted, not only the growing lateness of the hour, but because time is of the essence on maintaining local control, we need to do this approval tonight. Because the staff did such a good job, which everyone agrees on. And because the town manager's initiative with Nugget and Five Points really shows that this town really does listen and work with its community, I do think we have the community's trust moving forward here that we're going to make and continue to make the right decision. So I know you're not asking for a motion, but I would so move that we do all three of these, everything that the staff is asking for and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Given Patricia's feedback and where we're at, I'll put to Fred.
Yeah, just full disclosure, I was at World Gym in Kenfield before it moved to Corder Madera with old Dr. John. Yeah, thanks. So I've been a member there since forever. I won't age myself. I think there's been, I think the concerns with Nugget have been really addressed. I appreciate staff working that out with their general counsel and with their leadership. I've gotten a lot of feedback from Five Points Fitness. Again, most of your choice, you know, the gym's gonna go away tomorrow. Maybe you heard anything about everything's domain. The two things I think that kind of offset that is one is, and I really appreciate you reaching out to Brian, one of the owners at the gym. Correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like he's not concerned. Is that, is that the impression? In other words, he's not concerned that as much as some of the members may be concerned?
That's correct.
Okay, and the other part to this also, Adam, is that you have not heard from the property owner, right? So it's not like the property owners come forward saying like other, some of the other lands, and I realize it's all economic driven. Just, we're in a weird economy right now, semi-recession. But you never heard from the owner saying, hey, potentially not next year, maybe down the road, this is something we'd like to do.
Oh. We didn't hear from them directly.
Okay, to me, that somewhat offsets the concerns just related to the Five Point Fitness Gym and hopefully they're there for another thirty years. I do hear what residents are saying. I get the feeling and I understand that not all their comments can be addressed. But it sounds like the biggest issue, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is the parking situation there, which it sounds like that is somewhat resolved through the modifications and the changes that, that, that have been made. I still have concerns with some of the usual things like infrastructure, but I think those are down the road. I still think, even though I know there's certain standards that it fits into a box, that the public still has the opportunity down the road when one of these developments does come up to voice their concerns at that time. And hopefully, if there's enough concerns, staff is going to listen to them, which I know you always do, and figure out how to mitigate those concerns and some of those issues that may come up. One other thing to note is that everybody thinks Five Points is a gym, which it is. There's a total social aspect to that gym. I've seen people are going there for an hour and they probably work out for five minutes. It's just, it's not a bad thing and it's, that gym varies. You get a lot of elderly type people in the morning. I'm one of them. And then you get the younger crowd in the afternoon, so it's all good. So let me just make sure. I'm actually writing comments down and I can't read my writing. Yeah, so those are all my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's important to look at what's before us, kind of big picture. And I think big picture, there's a lot to be really proud of here. You know, I am very confident in the overall strategy that the general plan amendment and that the zoning ordinance amendments lay out here, which is a strategy of taking the housing that were required by the state to build and for the purposes of reducing the impact on traffic and enhancing walkability and enhancing the ability, you know, the vibrancy of local businesses focusing on concentrating that housing along transit corridors, which is exactly what we've done here. And I think that's absolutely the right move. I'm very confident in the outreach program that staff has done. I think it's incredible. You know, when, when your public outreach is getting written up and getting praised into IJ, like, that doesn't happen. That's incredible. Uh, you know, so I think we should all be really thrilled, um, at, at what we see there. Engagement numbers of like thirty-six hundred, you said, in a town of ten thousand, that is stunning, especially given how busy we know all of our residents are. Uh, you know, that, that you guys were able to actually get thirty-six hundred residents to give you the time of day, participate, you know, and actually share their thoughts on what's happening and engage. That is amazing, and it, and it, you know, I think it should give us as policymakers the confidence to understand that we do have the informed consent of the community, the community understands, right, you know, the dynamics at play here. Uh, frankly, I think we saw that in a lot of the public comment, a lot of which was very thoughtful. People, you know, much more than I would have necessarily expected. People understood the Rena process, they understood state mandates, they understand, you know, all the moving parts here, and so, you know, I think a lot of that is, is a testament to the outreach uh, and the community education that was done by staff, so thank you, uh, for that. And then lastly, I just want to say, I'm, I'm also really happy with the responsiveness that we've shown, uh, to the public comments that we've received, and that part, you know, that, that pertains to both, uh, that Tamalpais Drive site that we ended up taking off the housing inventory after we, you know, got public comments and looked at it again. Uh, and it also pertains certainly to the adjustments that we've made, uh, at the Paradise Shopping Center, right? So much so, that Nugget, which was driving, you know, a lot of the community concern about this project, has now come around and said, hey, you know, thanks for working with us, we now better understand, uh, you know, what it is that you're proposing and what you're not proposing. Uh, and, and, you know, with that greater understanding and with changes that you guys have been willing to make at our request, we're now totally good with what you're proposing. Uh, you know, so, so I, I think there's every reason to support this. I think, you know, state housing mandates are a whole nother discussion on whether that's good or bad, but the, the point is that they're here, and Corder Madera's gotta do the best we can for our community in complying. And I think that's exactly what this looks like. So totally support, you know, what's been put forward here, really grateful to staff for the work that they've done, and also for, you know, for the outreach that they've done and, and how they've worked hand in glove with community members to really make sure that folks have their concerns heard. Um, the last thing I'll just say is that, you know, I'm, I, I know, I think the majority of the council's East Corder Madera residents, Nugget is our local shopping center, Five Points is our local gym. Uh, you know, and even not as a, a resident, but as a council member, Nugget is such a critical member of the Corder Madera community. Five Points is a critical member of the Corder Madera community, right? Those are, as, as folks said, absolute hubs for the community, and so I'm thrilled to hear that we've got them on board and that we've designed this proposal in a way that allows them to continue to flourish. Thank you.
Thanks, Eli. Um, yeah, so, following up, I mean, nobody in Corder Madera asked for us to remove successful businesses, right? And, uh, you know, going back to examples, I have seen Nugget move into Tiburon and revitalize a completely dead shopping center, create another community hub. It's what they do very well. And I'm glad that they expressed to the, to the council and to staff through the, their satisfied customers and residents, um, their fears, right? And we resolved them. I think what I would have liked to seen is we had set up this longer trajectory of ability to, to respond to these sooner, which would have been even more effective and would not be so put into a contentious kind of discussion in a lot of the, the, the feedback. And that's what I would hope for moving forward, is, is that kind of engagement and understanding that we're here to protect those things, not destroy them, right? And, um, you know, uh, also, uh, there are three other gyms that are, uh, currently leasing other buildings that are identified, and they have not brought up, but I feel that they're just as critical to both East and West Corder Madera. And I think this idea that a gym is only an asset of an area divided by highway is not really understanding how much we love and, and operate in this community, right? My kids play baseball at Cove, and they go get candy, just like everybody else. So, you know, know that we're here, and we are also residents, and we hear you, but we also have these larger picture um, necessities that are required of us as a municipality and as elected officials. So, um, you know, given all the feedback and then, uh, very clear and concise, uh, information about how we should proceed and what is, um, currently written and approvable versus, you know, things that are future and, um, uh, basically gut feelings. It's, it, we have to go with what we know. And the other thing is, is, you know, there are many industrial areas over there, office buildings that have currently been disposed of from large tenants that might even be better for future, uh, occupation by some of these, you know, in, as part of our role on the, uh, the, the commerce group, you know, the, the Chamber of Commerce, it's really in those kind of aspects that we would promote and help those, um, community assets to grow and prosper, not remove them from the palm, the palm side of our experience, right? So, I, um, I just hope that people understand that, uh, because I get a sense that they think that they're some dark entity that wants to destroy this community when it's only really love that we're trying to continue to propagate. So with that, and going through the entire process, which I always appreciate the political process, I now look uh, to the rest of my council to, um, make a, uh, a motion to adopt resolution number two, twenty-three, and three-twenty-three, and introduce the ordinances requested. There was, so we need a second. Yeah, so Patricia, first motion?
Second.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote. We, so we're voting on two of them, and then the third one, we're just moving it forward. First, we're, it's just the first reading. So we'll have to have a separate motion on that. So this is for the two ordinances to
Resolutions.
Two resolutions. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll put down a first and second, a first by Councilmember Avasio, second for, from Councilmember Thomas for all three, both resolution zero-two, twenty-twenty-three, zero-three, twenty-twenty-three, and the introduction of the ordinance, but we'll do two separate.
No, I think we need two separate motions as well, so. Can I get a, can I get a motion for the other, for the, for the, the first reading as well, since we already have a first and second, and?
Can we have both those motions on the table at the same time?
We vote on one and then vote on the other.
Okay, I'll move that we introduce, uh, the proposed rezoning ordinance. Uh, I don't see an ordinance number.
Um, we don't, we will provide.
Okay, ordinance for. Great.
I, I'll second it.
Okay, all right, two separate votes. Can you clarify which vote we're going for first?
We will do, um, the vote for the resolutions first. Um, so Councilmember Cassisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Um, thank you, that motion passes, and now we will do, those motions pass, and now we will do the vote for the introduction of the ordinance. Councilmember Cassisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee, I mean, Vice Mayor Beckman, sorry, and Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, and that motion passes as well.
Okay, well, well, thank you. So, so with that, I'll close item four A, and that cl- closes all the public hearings, uh, which leads us to five adjournment.